And to call this regular meeting of the Chavano Park City Council to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Maggie Kowth, Conrad Kirkendall will lead us in the indication. If you all please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under common indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for all your blessings and gifts to us. Thank you for the precious gift of family and friends, all those that are here with us today and those who are far away. Thank you for your abundance and grace. Thank you for being with us every day. Ask God to protect the families and childrens across the way and help Israel and Gaza through this. We ask for your guidance and blessings in this meeting, help us to make good decisions here. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, item number three, citizens be heard. Dave Pierce, Dave, come on up. If you'd tell us who you are and where you live.
David Pierce, 118 Fawn Drive. I just wanted to talk about the street reconstruction or repaving. For those on the council that don't know, unfortunately for her and me, my wife is a, she's a very busy physician and nephrologist and she gets called in a lot and it could be all hours of the night on the weekend or when she's on call. And I, I just, I talked to Brandon Peterson when he was here and I said, and of course, he doesn't know the ins and outs. I mean, he's gone, but I just want to make sure she would be able to get out of our driveway when she needed to, you know, because, because when she does, she only gets called in when there's a real emergency and she has to take care of these people, you know? There's no one, it's her turn and there's no one else to go and, and do it. And I didn't know if there's a way, since we have, we're not quite like your driveway mayor, but we have two entrances. And I don't, I don't know if the paving company could, could come around and just do one and then continue on or not, you know? I don't have any idea, but I just want to make sure she's able to get out when she, when she needs to.
Okay.
That's about all I have to say.
We will, we will address that with Chris specifically, Bill, unless you'd like to.
Yeah, I can, I can address that. The, the contractor, subcontractors, both asphalt and concrete do that. If there's two driveways, they do one, they let it get set and then they do the second one. Do you have asphalt or concrete?
Well, no, the thing is, according to your plan, they're not going to tear up my approaches. It's just, I want to make sure she can get out of the street.
No, they will be able to, always.
You know, because, because according to your deal, you're not going to tear up my concrete approaches, you know?
Well, they will, they're, they're going to tear up the concrete approaches up to almost where the right of way is. And then they'll rebuild that and they'll do one at a time and you'll be given complete notice. And there will always be one which you will, you'll be able to access and she can park that way and be ready to go.
Okay.
And then you're lucky because you can go out Fawn to the west or you can go out to the north that way. There's multiple ways you can go.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
According to the, the plan that I looked at, our, our approaches weren't one of the ones that they were going to.
Okay. Yeah. We can check in on that.
We'll, we'll check back, we'll get back with you on that. Okay. Item number four, city council comments, Lee.
I'd like to thank everybody for attending, either in person or electronically or watching in later as it's recorded. And like everybody, I had a great Thanksgiving, hope everybody did, and I'm looking forward to a big Christmas this year, especially the city event. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Pete?
Yeah, just, just a big welcome to everybody and I'd like to iterate what Lee just said. We're looking forward to the, the Christmas event.
Conrad?
Good to see everyone and echo the same sentiments. Happy late Thanksgiving to everyone.
Maggie?
Well, we definitely are within the holiday season and Chavano Park started off with our trunk or treat event, which was absolutely a riot. It was so much fun and I think it was a very big event. And I want to thank all of our employees who each, each department came forth with a, with a trunk, at least a trunk. Some of them hold trucks, but that's really what helps make a community just get together and enjoy everything. The adults were dressed up as well as the kids. It was just, and, and all the employees look like they're having fun and we know you had to work very hard to get things together and do your jobs at the same time. And I really appreciate it and I know our community does, so I'm glad everyone had a good time.
Thank you, Maggie. Buddy?
Welcome, everyone. Happy belated Thanksgiving and happy holidays.
Very good. Brings us to item number five, presentations, commentations, announcements, item 5.1 proclamation and holiday cheer, Santa and the Grinch. Whereas the city of Chavano Park, Texas takes a great deal of pride in hosting and sharing our longstanding and heartfelt traditions with all who take time to join us in the celebration of the holiday event. And whereas the city of Chavano Park's holiday event shares the joys of a season exemplified by brightly lit and beautiful grounds adorned in their best holiday fashions, families strolling in the circle and walkways of the city hall and the excitement of children meeting Saint Nicholas and his nine reindeer. And whereas the Grinch has also been known to make a surprise visit at city, at Chavano Park and the Grinch has been instructed to be on his very best behavior. And whereas the holiday event has become recognized by its residents and its visitors alike as a place to step into an atmosphere of holiday spirit, friendship and cheer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Robert B. Warner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Santa Claus welcome to spread good cheer, tidings and gifts in and for the city of Chavano Park and extend a heartfelt welcome to the Grinch should he attend. And witness whereof, I've executed this, this 27th day of November 2023. Now unfortunately, the Grinch and Santa are unavailable, but I have a very good friend of Santa Claus who is here to accept on behalf of Santa Claus, Lee Powers, and David Pierce, who is going to accept for his very good friend, the Grinch. And so if y'all would both come forward so we can get a picture.
Good job, David. You're snug up there, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. David, where would you take this one to the Grinch?
Good job, good job.
Now brings us to item number six, consent agenda. All materials listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately at the end of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.8?
So move.
We have a motion from Maggie.
Second.
We have a second from Lee. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. Item number seven, city manager's report. All matters listed in this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more councilmen. Go ahead and note with each item listed, discussion will generally occur. At the request of the city manager, I'm going to pull item 7.2 for a report from our fire chief and our city manager. Are there any other items to be pulled? There being no additional items, that will be considered at the very end of our agenda after 8.8. Brings us to item number eight, regular agenda items, discussion, action, phase 1A and phase 1B, street project update. Bill, Chris? Bill, are you going to go first or Chris?
I'll let Chris.
Good evening. So, construction is progressing. Wagon trail and ingate are essentially complete. There is some cleanup stuff that they still need to do. Concrete curbs that need patching and then getting vegetation established, but those are basically complete at this point. The 300th block of Fawn Drive, Fawn has the curbs in. Concrete swells have been poured and the first lift of asphalt has been completed. On chimney rock, they have completed the curbs and the first lift of asphalt will be completed here in the next two weeks. And once they get that lift in, then they will move on to Chavano Drive where they'll start the excavation at that time. Next slide. Couple of things we want to talk about tonight regarding driveways. Currently on the plans, the driveways are shown to be six inches of flex base with an inch and a half of type D asphalt for the, for the final surface. The, the header curb or the ribbon curb is, is shown on our plans to be between the road and the driveway. So you'll have a strip of concrete that goes in between those. Next slide. With RFI number seven, after some discussion with a contractor, the contractor suggested taking that concrete curb and turning it up the sides of the driveways as shown on the right-hand side of the screen. This makes it easier for them to construct because having that curb separating the asphalt driveway from the asphalt road complicates construction. And so going up the sides gives them a, a more workable surface when they go asphalt to asphalt as they go from the road to the driveway. So it improves constructability. It actually gives better protection to the driveway edges. You know, the whole reason we're putting curbs in this project is to prevent edge failure. And so by doing this, we're actually protecting the driveways, you know, within the right of way, at least 10 feet of it anyway. And then as a team, we kind of thought it looked better to have it, it curve in. That's an ancillary benefit. The, the real benefits are improved constructability and the edge protection of the driveways. As I mentioned, we had that curb there to protect the roadway. The roadway is still protected. We don't have to worry about edge failure at the driveways because the asphalt in the road will push up against the asphalt in the driveway. So we're not increasing risk of edge failure, we're actually protecting the driveways. The other thing we did with that same RFI is we reduced, reduced the depth of the curb from 16 and a half inches down to nine inches. We did 16 and a half inches initially per the geotech recommendation as a moisture barrier to keep moisture from getting underneath the asphalt. As we started excavating these streets, we started hitting rock anywhere from seven inches to 12 inches. And so on the screen, it says nine inches. It's actually nine inches minimum. I think 12 inches is what we told them, we wanted them to go to where they hit rock. They had to do a minimum of nine inches. And so if they're going down and they're not hitting rock, then it's 12 inches, but it's a nine inch minimum. And we weren't concerned about the, the moisture as much because, because of all the rock. I mean, there's not a lot of clay material to cause a lot of heave. Next slide. So with that change, another recommendation that was made was using type B asphalt in lieu of flex base for the driveways. Flex base, y'all saw it in action on wagon trail. It works good as long as the weather is dry. When it starts getting rainy, flex base starts moving, the contractor's constantly maintaining it. Residents are tracking flex base up and down their driveways. It generally just makes for a dirty site and makes access more difficult. So going to a type B gives us a hardware surface that's not going to get muddy. It's not going to be affected by rain, so it, it's better for the residents because they have better access to their properties. It's better for the contractor because once they put down that B, they're done. They don't have to come back and keep reworking it as it gets rutted during the rain. And we are expected to have a wetter than typical winter, according to everybody that I've heard from. So with that, we have three different options. Option one is build it per plan, there's really no change. Option two is to go with two and a half inches of type B and then top that off with an inch and a half of type D. There is an additional cost for this of 89,000, about $89,000. I will note that so far, we have processed five change orders. Those five change orders have resulted in a net deduct of, I believe it was $43,000. No, $58,000. Five got approved this morning. So, so far we've saved $58,000 on this project, so if we authorize this 89,000, it would be a net add of $31,000. The original structural number on the driveways was a 1.5. By going to this option, we're actually increasing it to a 1.98. So we are improving the strength of the driveways by about 32%. The con to this option is obviously cost. It's an $89,000 add or 31 to the original contract. The third option is something that the contractor presented as a cost-saving measure. I'm going to be honest, this option has really no benefit in my opinion. It's three inches of flex with three inches of type D. It does increase the structural number to a 1.74, so the driveways are a little bit stronger. But it doesn't affect the underlying issue of why we started this conversation, which was constructability and access during wet weather. So I put three up there because the contractor presented it. I don't really think it's a viable option that makes sense. Option two is the one that I would recommend. And I'm going to go through the rest of my presentation that we can come back and I'm looking for direction from council on what we want to do with that or if you want to do that now.
Do you want to do that at the end?
Sure, go ahead. I don't think he's got much more.
There's, there's really not. Gas work is complete. As y'all are aware, the gas contractor missed the intersection of Chavano Drive and wagon trail when they first went through, so they came back and finished it and that did not create any issues for us. Next slide. The water updates, they've completed all 17 water crossings as we've discussed before. On the cul-de-sacs, they've completed Warbler and Bent Oak, that was 240 feet. They're currently working on Fawn at Windmill and then Windmill at Bent Oak. I said cul-de-sacs, these aren't cul-de-sacs. This is Northwest Military. Northwest Military, they have completed the 240 feet from Warbler to Bent Oak. They're currently working on Fawn to Windmill and then the 1,100 feet between Windmill and Bent Oak. I've talked to Johnny about that and due the, due to the amount of asbestos pipe on that piece, he's looking at possibly getting a contractor to take care of that one. Or maybe do it with in-house forces, but having an.
You're talking about this middle one right here.
The, the middle piece right there.
Right.
Johnny, I don't know if you want to speak more, but he had mentioned possibly doing it with the in-house crews, but then having a third party deal with the disposal of the AC pipe.
So on the 1,100 foot section, we're looking at, well, disposing of the 1,100 foot of AC water main. So being that we do have to dispose of it properly, it does require for a third-party contractor to come in, do some sort of, since it is AC pipe, it'll be air quality. They'll also be bagging it at the same time as we're removing it. So we'd be removing it, they'd be putting it off to the side of the road. We'd be, they'd be bagging up the old AC main, we'd only be touching the PVC. And the same company that's looking at doing all this work is going to be actually getting rid of our existing AC water main that we've done for not only our 17 crossings, but the 240-foot section and then the current section that we're doing, which is a 360-foot section of AC water main. So they're willing to, they're going to get rid of all of that pipe for us for one flat rate at the moment. And the text dot contract permit is for eight months. So we're looking at knocking out the cul-de-sacs, coming back to this project, maybe early spring, preferably probably before that and knocking out the remaining amount. And then, like I said, we'll do the water line in-house currently, like we're doing, but we will, to mitigate the pipe, get rid of it and haul it off, we'll actually be using a contractor for that. Just it'll be a smoother process. It'll get the guys in and get the guys out. It won't, we won't have to be changing it from one location to the other like we, like we're currently doing. It'll be actually getting removed from the job site and they would be hauling it to whatever landfill that they have a contract with at that point.
Just a quick clarification. If you look at the screen on the left over here, this shows Northwest Military Highway where our water main line is. And then we realized after the conclusion of what the subcontractor replaced, that we had a small section in here and a small section in here, which was AC pipe. And there's no reason why we had to replace it, but we thought, let's just make it contiguous. So we, we did that and we did that in stride last year under Brandon Peterson. Then we did an assessment, what do we have remaining? We found out that we, look at the, the screen on the right. We had a section here of 350 feet, here 1,100 feet and here 240. And these two on the ends seem to be pretty manageable, easy to do within a week or two. And so we worked a permit request with text dot, we got permission to work these two. And then that would basically only have two connection points to the AC pipe. That, that pipe is fine. Eventually, we're going to have to replace it. So the idea is while we were constructing on Northwest Military Highway, just knock out these two segments here. Leave that long segment that's got some concrete driveways and some other things that make it more complicated. But the current plan is, and I think they'll be done with this section within, what, a week, Johnny, two?
Yes, sir, we're looking by early next week.
They seem to be moving really quick today, actually. And so we're going to go back to the cul-de-sacs because these were unplanned, right? You guys approved the funding of that last time. We don't have to do this middle section for a year or two or three or four. We can assess it whenever we need to and whenever it's convenient, we have the manpower should, should be needed. It just seems to be a good opportunity to have a contiguous PVC pipe all the way down the, down Northwest Military Highway. So it may or may not be something that we actually do. So I just highlight that.
Okay. Chris, anything else?
The last thing is the Days of Allah project, which was a project or phase 1B. That's still on hold pending further direction on, on the funding and the development of phase 1C. So if we want to go back to this slide for RFI 10, we're looking for direction from council as to how y'all would like us to proceed. Again, I think the two viable options are one, stick with the existing plan, there is no change. Or option two, which is to replace the flex base with two and a half inches of type B and one and a half inches of type D.
Okay. We'll open that up for discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, questions, comments and concerns? We have major failure along Chavano Drive. There are at least four places where asphalt meets asphalt and there are structural favorable, failure and deformation. And this is, this started happening after 15 years. We've asked citizens along other streets in the old section, what's happened when the big trucks have come by. I think in the time that Bill's been here, he's fixed my asphalt driveway in front of my asphalt. Public Works has fixed in front of my asphalt driveway twice. So it, it didn't even make 20 years. My major concern is structural integrity. I understand what you were just talking about with the flare. I would almost be willing, I, I might consider spending the $44,000 extra just to have the belt and suspenders approach because we know what we're going to get with the header curb. That's engineered, it's tried and true. We understand what curbs do. Asphalt to asphalt, I understand the integrity that you're providing additional integrity, but at the point that the rubber meets the road, that asphalt is on the base that has been provided there and it's not necessarily the greatest of engineering that people put in their own personal driveways. If we can provide an extra 16% of protection for those, last thing I want to do is still be alive 25 years from now and that road, those roads are failing at those asphalt driveways. Because I'm not going to be very happy, but who's going to be accountable? You're not going to be here, Bill's not going to be here, I'm not going to be the mayor. God forbid, I'm still the mayor. But somebody, we need to make sure that we have belt and suspenders on this issue because this is one of the reasons why we're doing this, is because we have points of failure. We know we have points of failure and the points of failure are not at the concrete driveways. They're at the asphalt driveways throughout the city.
And, and so those failures are typically caused by a cold joint between two different asphalt sections. You, you know, the road's there first and then they come in with the asphalt driveway. And so you, you've got a cold joint there and they're probably not putting tack coat or anything in there. And, and so it is a weak point. When they do it this way, they're going to put down the type B for the road and the type B for the driveways at the same time. And so it'll be one contiguous surface from the road into the driveways. And then the same thing when they do the final surface. And so the, the connection point from the driveway to the road is actually going to be stronger without the header curb there because there is no joint. It's all going to be laid at the same time. By having, having the header curb there, that there, there's actually two joints, one on either side. It's strong, but it does introduce an opportunity for water to penetrate. It's not a huge risk, but if you can do one contiguous surface, it is better, in my opinion.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Mayor, of course, that third option is a hybrid between the one and two, but it doesn't include the curb. So it's, it would actually be worse than option two. It's, it's, it's not as strong. Option two improves the driveway strength by 32%.
Okay, I, I thought that this was still including the curb and that we were just simply adding additional asphalt type D and additional flex base, which sounds good to me, the, the more the, the more material, the more integrity it would seem to imply to me. But I'm not an engineer and Pete is. Pete, what do you think?
Based on what you're saying, anytime you have joints, more joint, the more joints you have in any type of structure like that, it weakens it. So if you can have continuous, it makes it stronger.
Correct.
I, I agree with you. I think option two is probably the better way to go.
Yeah, and there will be, just full disclosure, there is going to be a cold joint in the driveway, but that cold joint is going to be into the driveway at least 10 feet where you're not going to have garbage trucks and stuff like that potentially driving over them. It'll just be personal vehicles at that point. And they will saw cut that and they'll tack coat it and they'll put in a good joint, unlike most home builders when they tie into a road.
Okay, so, so how much asphalt are we putting down? Because in the road, we're not putting down four inches of asphalt. The, the, the item three provided six inches of asphalt and flex base combined. We're putting down something like nine inches of asphalt and base in the roads.
So in the roads, we're putting down four and a half inches of, four and a half inches of type B and three inches of type D for a total of seven and a half inches. In the driveways, we don't need that kind of load because we don't have garbage trucks. We don't have, you know, mainly garbage trucks. Those are the things that destroy streets. And so in the driveways, going with two and a half inches of type B, which is the minimum thickness for type B and then an inch and a half of type D, which again is the minimum thickness for a type D.
Okay. Conrad?
Trying to understand this a little bit better. We have that concrete ribbon will then go off to the side and you're saying that if you go, if you go, if we leave it as it goes straight and then the driveway is attached to that, you're saying that extra joint is kind of an issue?
So Curtis just brought that screen back up. And so on the left-hand side is what's currently shown in the plans and that ribbon curb goes straight across the driveway. So you, you have an asphalt pavement. So you, you have an asphalt pavement, a curb, and then asphalt driveway. And so there, there's two, there's two joints there, one on either side of the curb. And properly constructed with tack coat and everything else, you're probably not gonna get water infiltration. But anytime you have a joint, there's a risk of it.
But on the outside part, not the inside part, or both?
It's more likely to occur on the outside, because of the, the cross slope of the street. So the street, the street has a two percent cross slope towards the curb. And then the driveways typically also have a cross slope towards the curb. Now, some of them do continue sloping down into the property, but typically your curb is gonna be kind of in a V. And so that's when you increase the risk, especially on the backside of the curb.
So the, the risk is on the backside of the curb, but not on the inside?
It's more so on the backside, yes.
Which is essentially homeowner.
The backside's the home?
Because if they don't construct it right?
Well, but we would be reconstructing it as part of this project. Because we're reconstructing all of the driveways that we damaged.
It just kind of seems like that that's the stronger one than that one.
The, the proposed one is stronger, in my opinion, because...
This one?
Yes. Because you don't have that joint between the driveway and the street. So, I know in this drawing, we showed, there's a dashed line there that's just indicating the difference, road versus driveway. But there is no joint here. It's all gonna be one solid surface from the road into the driveway. And what this does provide is the ribbon curb coming up both sides of the driveway will prevent edge failure of that driveway. And so as you have vehicles driving in, if they do miss, you know, the driveway and they drive on the edge of pavement, there's curb there to protect it. That, that's what really damages your roads, is when people are passing each other, they move off to the side. They get right on the edge of pavement and that's what causes it to break off. And so by having this curb here in the driveway, these driveway approaches are gonna last longer, because they're protected from that edge failure.
I guess you're saying that maybe all the weight instead of the asphalt here is, equalizes, according from the, so the one over here that looks like to me would be stronger?
Yeah, it does, it equalizes also. So you have greater, or less risk of the driveway and the road moving at different rates. Now again, we're sitting on solid rock, we're not expecting anything to move. But if something did move, with the proposed solution, they would move together. Whereas in the old plan, you might, you might get some separation where the driveway lifts or sinks a little bit more than the road does. You could end up with a, you know, half inch lip. That's not gonna happen with the proposed.
It just looks like that's stronger, you know, the proposed, first proposal, but...
And in my opinion, the proposed is actually gonna be stronger.
Okay. If, Pete?
Chris, you might want to say something about the construction timing as well. Because that, that actually, I think plays into this as well. When, when you look at the, kind of the, the old way, right? You actually pour that ribbon curb first and then the asphalt, and then you come do the driveway. Versus when you look at the proposal that you're going at, that driveway section gets poured all at the same time, which makes it stronger as well.
That is a good point. So when we pour the curb going across the driveways, that curb's gonna be elevated seven and a half inches before they put in the first lift. And so they gotta put in ramps to get up the, over the curb and then down on the backside of the curb. Which creates, I don't wanna say an access issue, but it's less than ideal access. They can still get in and out. But it is something the contractor has to maintain, because that's typically done with base material. And again, when it rains, the base material starts to settle, it starts to rut, and so they're constantly maintaining that. Whereas with our proposed section, with the curbs going up the side, you don't have that seven inches that you have to get over, because the, the road's gonna be excavated, the driveway's gonna be excavated. And you can, you can ramp that slowly until the first lift of asphalt gets put in, and then everything's at the same level.
Give you a little bit of where I'm thinking. So to me, down the road, ten, fifteen years, Mayor was talking about, city's responsibility for construction ends here, whereas it's gonna end back up in here somewhere later on.
The city's responsibility would still end where that dotted line is, because that's the edge of road.
Well, I guess what he's saying is that, that, all of that work that's being done is in the right of way. And we have the right to do whatever we want to in the right of way. We could extend the asphalt all the way to the edge of the right of way, and we have now. And because we have extended the asphalt to the edge of the right of way at those driveway points, we remain fiscally responsible for any failures that are occurring. Conrad, is that what you're saying? And so it does extend our liability, which goes to my question about, if you were the king and you got to decide whether you were putting down two and a, two and a half and one and a half, or you were putting down three and three, which would you do? Because I understand that the extension of the, of the curving, the header curb is gonna now head flare into the properties. If we wanted to see it, we could look at it along Fawn Drive. That's what has already been put down on the asphalt driveways. Would you be putting down the three and three, or would you be putting down two and a half and one and a half? And is there a value to putting down the three and three as opposed to the two and a half and the one and a half?
I would do the two and a half and the one and a half, because that's all hot mix asphalt, concrete, or cement. The three and three is three inches of flex base and three inches of type D. The flex base, flex base has a structural number of one, I'm sorry, zero point one four per inch of thickness. HMAC has a structural number of zero point four four per inch of thickness. And so it's almost three times as strong as flex base. And so, putting in two and a half inches of flex is significantly more, has more strength than, I'm sorry, two and a half inches of type B has more strength than three inches of flex base. And then again, during construction, flex base is going to have issues when it starts raining. Whereas the type B, it can rain on that all day long and, you know, it'll dry out and it, you don't have to rework it or anything. It's, it's a road.
Okay, so, so the, the difference in how much of the type B and, and the type D that we're putting down is really based upon the fact that the garbage trucks aren't driving on the driveways. And if everybody was just driving cars and pickups and delivery vehicles, that we could have gone with a much, a much more shallow area of the total combined asphalts that we're putting down. Is that...
Correct. In, in fact, we did, from the Geotech, we had an option for the roadways that was thinner than the four and a half and the, and the three. We didn't go with it, because we felt the streets needed more strength because of garbage trucks and propane trucks and, and stuff like that. But the driveways, I mean, driveways, you will have propane trucks driving down them. Those are heavy. They're nearly as heavy as a concrete, as a garbage truck. But occasionally, you know, once a quarter, a propane truck's not gonna damage your asphalt driveway.
Okay. Buddy?
I saw that on your diagram on the proposed and the, the, the current and proposed. You had ten feet or less. Is that based on the right of way, or is that just an arbitrary number that they're using? And if it was, what did y'all do your estimates on to come up with the thirty-one thousand dollars?
So the ten feet or less was based on trying to do a one-for-one swap. If we went straight through the driveway, most of the driveways are gonna be twelve to fourteen feet. And so, you know, if you just take that and go up each side, you would get six to seven feet. That's, some of them are wider at ten feet, which is why we came up with the ten feet or less. We were just trying to do a one-for-one swap.
If you're gonna make that determination, otherwise we're gonna have neighbors coming in saying, "I'll come this is longer than mine."
Yeah, we can, as we're doing these, we can work with the contractor and try and standardize it.
Sorry, just to clarify this, you, you're kind of adjusting for square footage rather than length or something like that?
The length of the curb is, so the length around that radius is what we're looking at versus going straight across the driveway.
Okay. Maggie?
Just for my own clarification, you say that the portion is going to be damaged or whatever by rainfall. You're speaking like forever or at the time of application?
No, so flex space, when it's exposed, will absorb water and it will start to rut. Car tires, especially trucks with off-road tires, will actually pick up the aggregate and carry it off. Once you put down the, the asphalt, that concern goes away. You cover the, you cover that flex space with asphalt and it's no longer an issue. It's just during construction, flex space and water just don't mix.
Okay. During construction?
During construction.
Not forever?
Yeah, yeah. Once we put down the HMAC, then the flex space is protected and it's no longer a concern.
Okay. Going back to your, how thick the curving is going to be, how deep the curving is going to be. Golly, about every thousand, about every hundred feet in my yard, I've got a different type of geology. I've got some deep areas, I've got some shallow areas, I've got some sandy loam, I've got some clay. And it's just all completely different. Are we going to be looking for clay as we do this? And are we going to go deeper on the clay when we hit clay? Or are we just going to go with a new uniform standard that says, "We're not going to go as deep as we had originally proposed in our contract"?
So the new standard for the curbs is twelve inches thick. But what we're doing is as they're excavating the roads, we're evaluating the subgrade conditions and determining how much rock and how much clay's there. If there's not too much rock and it actually, it's a workable subgrade, then they are doing cement treatment, which benefits the curbs as well.
Okay, but my question is, if it's clay on the side of the road and we're cutting into that, are we getting the same structural integrity? Because it's just one piece of rebar that goes into that concrete. It's not like two or three pieces. It's just one piece that goes in there. And if you've got clay, that clay is going to ebb and flow and very quickly, like ten, fifteen, twenty years quickly, that concrete is going to become degraded. Whereas sixteen inches is, I, I would imagine that it's like putting boards together, that when you put two two-by-fours together and you put four two-by-fours together, you go like, it's a logarithmic improvement in the strength of that. It's not like one and one and one makes four. It's like one and one and four, one and one and one makes twelve, as far as the integrity. And I'm assuming the same thing happens with concrete. Are we gonna go back to sixteen inches where we have clay? Are we going to stick with twelve the whole way, because that's what we've agreed to?
So the sixteen inches was never about strength. Twelve inches of concrete is, is more than enough to carry a vehicle. Even on highways, when they do concrete pavement, it's typically ten inches. And so the, the, the reason the Geotech recommended sixteen inches was to get into the subgrade, to prevent water migration into the subgrade. With the cement stabilization, the subgrade's not gonna move. And so having that barrier isn't necessary, necessary, or as necessary, I should say. But from a structural standpoint, twelve inches is more than enough for a road. I mean, most, when you see in the city of San Antonio, where they have a curb and gutter, where the concrete actually comes into the pavement, that, that section's only seven inches thick.
Okay. I just know that San Antonio has a hell of a time with clay. And I know that we have some in Chauvin O Park. Bill keeps hunting for that place where there's forty feet of clay, because we're gonna plant pecan trees right there. But I'm just saying, I'm not exactly sure about that. Pete, did you have a question?
Yeah, Chris, the reduction from sixteen and a half to nine inches is only in the curb, right? It's not along the main line. It's not the whole thing. It's just, it's just the driveway curb.
It's the curb. And so when, well, it's the whole length of the curb.
It's twelve, it's supposed to be twelve.
It's twelve inches. And so, be, because we were hitting so much rock out there, on, on chimney rock in particular, they were hitting rock at ten to twelve inches of depth. And so we set twelve inches as the standard. And then we allow them to go as, as thin as nine inches where they're hitting rock. Because then you're, you're sitting on rock, putting additional, cutting into rock to add concrete doesn't do anything for you.
Okay. Okay. We're assuming gonna finish with chimney rock and we're gonna be going on to Fawn Drive. Is Fawn Drive going to be phased, or are we going to just rip the whole thing up? It's about a half a mile long, it's about a six tenths of a mile long. Six point five miles long, or point six five miles long. Are we going to phase that? Are we going to tear the whole thing up? And, you know, how is it gonna be deployed?
They do the two and one hundred blocks separately on Fawn.
Well, just unlike Fawn, we did, we're doing the three hundred blocks separate than the one hundred block.
The two hundred and one hundred blocks of Fawn will be done in separate phases.
But Chauvin O?
Chauvin O Drive, we preliminarily have discussed with Gerald with D and D, to split it up in two or three parts and they, as they do their excavation. Simply because we're approaching the holidays and we don't want a huge expanse of that road exposed.
Yeah. No, that's what I'm thinking, that it's the holidays.
A little more bite-sized chunks.
Okay, so we're not gonna tear the whole thing up at once, okay? Next question, unless somebody else got a question. Pete?
This is kind of related to the curves, but, so on, on Fawn Drive, one of the things that we do is we have a very sharp curve in more of the areas. And we currently have two speed humps that are there. And my question is, is when we redo the road on Fawn Drive, is my understanding that we're gonna replace those two humps back? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, well, let me just clarify that. City Council, and I can't remember what year it is, but I have the documentation passed by ordinance or passed by resolution, one or the other, the approval of those two humps. They actually, you know, my, my intent right now is to replace it with not bumps, but speed humps, in accordance with our current policy. The, the other ones, I have no documentation that there was ever a city council action on that. Now, someone may produce that, but that would be my current plan. And based upon my assessment, this isn't because, you know, you had a concerned citizen that had children or, you know, they, there legitimately is a, a significant hazard there. And there are records that show a number of wrecks where people went down Fawn and didn't make a turn and went right, right into the private property.
Right into the trees.
And since, I can just tell you, I don't know how effective it is, but since I've been here, there hadn't been any of those wrecks on Fawn at that location. And that's since the speed humps have been put there. For one year, I think there were three accidents in one year. And one of the residents provided that information to us.
Yeah, Mary was on city council back then. Okay. Finished? Okay. On the water pipes, the haul-off is a new item. Have we budgeted for the water, for the pipe haul-off, or is that going to be a budget amendment at a later date?
We're working that negotiation. Johnny, you had a contractor come. We've actually, all the previous asbestos pipe, we packaged it ourselves. We got it ready and they're working with a contractor. I haven't seen that yet in terms of what the cost is to haul that away. Johnny told me, I don't think it was, where are you, Johnny? I, I don't think it was a huge expense, but it would be a, a budget amendment if, if, if we needed to be.
So the current pipe with the crossings as well, everything plus what we're taking out as well Northwest Military, this week finishing next, that total's gonna be three thousand dollars. And the, the driver is gonna handle everything. What the most would do is wrap it for him. And they're gonna take care of the manifest and the disposal of everything. So the three thousand dollars will cover everything. The driver does this for a living. He, he does asbestos mitigation for saws, for tons of people around here, cities. He's, he's like, I, I, it's cold, there's not a lot of work going on. I'd really like to keep my guys working. This is definitely a project that we can take on and just give our guys some work.
Okay, our, our guys are not trained in asbestos mitigation, to my knowledge.
No, sir.
Are we going to be doing anything, because we're not trained to do asbestos mitigation?
Uh, no, other than it just being...
No, we bagged it up, Johnny.
We bag it up, but that's about it.
There's nothing other you need to do to bag it up, you know? We're not disposing of it.
There's not an issue with us bagging it up as far as exposure?
No, if we were grinding it up, we had...
No, sir, we're, we're not cutting it with a chainsaw. And that's where you do run into the problems, is when you're actually saw cutting... you do run into the problems is when you're actually saw cutting it, you're getting those fibers, they're breaking loose and that's causing, you know, an illness, but we're not, we're not saw cutting anything, we're just taking the whole pieces that we cut out, the 10-foot joints, and we're going basically bell-to-bell, replacing it, and we're taking it, bagging it, and just leaving it stocked up.
Okay. Okay, thank you Johnny, appreciate that. I've had multiple citizens who have asked me about asphalt driveway replacements while we have all of this construction in place and while we're doing all of this, laying all of this asphalt. Have we approached D and D about the idea of them soliciting our citizens for asphalt replacement?
We've had several conversations about that. At one point, I did suggest prohibiting that, just because it creates a gray space that isn't fun to be in.
Under the, under the contract?
It allows it, doesn't it?
Any, any resident can, can, with their own money can contract D and D to do work on their property?
Well, before they leave town.
We don't have a provision.
You know, and, and at the end of this project, that's the time for us to have asphalt driveways replaced. Not while we're doing everything else, but at the end of the contract for D and D to still be, we are, we have boots on the ground in Chavino Park. We don't have to do the provisioning of sending people there and sending people away.
You can, you can tell those residents, they can email contact@chavino park.org, that will get to me, and I can get them in touch with upper level management. You know, because you could talk to the guy in the street, they're probably not gonna know, but upper level.
The topic has been broached with D and D, it's in the contract. They haven't been in position whatsoever at this point in time to do any of that, they've kind of stiff-armed us, they might come back to that. Two of the residents on wagon trail actually subcontracted with a different contractor and did it actually prior to the final coat being down, so some of that's ongoing. It's something probably is, if D and D gets better at what they're doing and more efficient, not behind, then maybe they'll consider it. But we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it again with them on Thursday, we have a meeting this Thursday.
Okay. Lee?
When it comes to this type of work, I prefer to take a apples-to-apples, oranges-to-oranges approach. Uh, I don't think the city should put its stamp in any way on promoting this, however, if a citizen should call and say, are they doing a good job on the streets? Why, yes, yes they are, I can't give a recommendation. You're free to do that and judge their work yourselves. I would hate to get into a position where we're endorsing public work to be done on private streets, no matter how clean it is. Somebody will see it and somebody will complain. Past history shows that, so from my standpoint, let's keep it vanilla.
Okay, very good. Uh, final item, Johnny. You and your crew deserve a round of applause for the 17 water crossings that are already complete without us having to contract out. You know, I commend you. Please let the. Well, uh, we're, we're, we need to have another brisket dinner. When y'all finish off the 100 and some, the 200 and the 350 feet. Sounds great. Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns concerning phases 1A and 1B? Chris, thank you very much.
I just wanna clarify, are, are y'all giving us direction to go?
We do have a proposed motion.
Oh, we have a motion, okay.
A proposed motion.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve the draft change order so that the planned six inches of flex base will be replaced with 2.5 inches of type B H M A C asphalt? Uh, and I'm assuming the 1.5 inches of one, of, uh, type D asphalt. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie, we're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Brings us to item 8.2, discussion action award contract for banking services depository. Bill, do you wanna start and we will recognize Brenda when you have finished?
Well, Brenda, come on up here, I would say we received three proposals and they were very detailed, some of them, I didn't bring them with me, but very, very detailed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With the current depository contract expiring December 31st of this year, the city released a banking services request for proposal on October 10. 21 inquiries were received by the end of the question period and addendum number one was released on October 30th. By the proposal deadline on November 6th, the city had received three submittals and those are listed in alphabetical order from Frost Bank, Lone Star National Bank, and Plains Capital Bank. The scoring committee comprised of the city manager, assistant city manager, and finance director independently reviewed and scored the RFP submittals based upon the criteria outlined in the request for proposals. And those include reputation and quality of services, ability to perform and provide services, the cost of those services, completeness of the bid document, strength and stability, security activities and safekeeping, online treasury management services, collateral qualifications, terms and conditions, proximity to city hall, that's especially important to me. And then we had a small reviewer's discretion in case there was something that the reviewer wanted to highlight. So the scoring committee's consensus recommendation, oh, I'm sorry, each bank's proposal was complete, well organized, and addressed the city's terms and conditions as stated in the RFP. So the scoring committee's consensus recommendation financial institution is Frost Bank, which was the top scored financial institution for each of the scoring committee members.
And are we going to release the scores that, the aggregate scores that were for each one of the institutions, Bill? It's in the package, but I meant for the public.
Yeah, I mean, if, if someone wants it, typically we'll get a request for records and we release that.
Okay. Okay, um, Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Well, I would say, you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult to score these and grade them, and they were very complete packets. And legitimately, Brenda gave us the score sheets and we all took about, you know, three to five days to look at it and look at it again and look at it again. And I will say that independently, all three scorers had very, very close scores, it was remarkable actually, and, um, so, you know, probably could go with any of those three. Some of them are more known than others, and, uh, but the, the scoring recommenda-, you know, the scoring committee's recommendation is Frost Bank.
Okay? Okay, um, at this time, I will entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract negotiations with and specify the bank for depository services for January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2028. Do I have a motion? No, Lee, you need to specify which bank.
Move that we award this to Frost Bank.
Okay, Lee has made a motion to award it to Frost, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second from Conrad. Are there any other motions for any other banks? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item number 8.3, discussion action ordinance O 2023-022, amending chapter 34, article 5, public right-of-way management and add micro-trenching, uh, street cut and under-street boring standards, and additionally add a penalty assessment for damage to Chavino Park water utility infrastructure in the public right-of-way. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the city established our public right-of-way ordinance in 2021, and this is the first time we've come back to it to make amendments, and since 2021, we've learned a lot of lessons. And it's all spent lots of infrastructure investment, as we've all covered earlier this evening and you're very aware of. So I won't go into all that. But there's, there's four main things that these amendments are proposing, three I'll cover right up here. There are standards for street cuts. We do not have in our current ordinances today a standard for when we said, or a company could do an open street cut or when they couldn't. This proposes a good-conditioned street, it's a pavement condition index, that's what PCI stands for, of 86 or above, we prohibit it outright. Of course, I put up there, there is always a caveat for an emergency repair has, they can do a street cut, that's totally understandable, water line main burst or gas line burst, of course. But otherwise, it's a prohibited. We now had no standards for underground boring, so if we're gonna make them do an underground boring underneath the road, we had to provide standards, so we outright prohibit the cheaper and less accurate missile boring. We provide minimum depth separation from other utilities, other, they have to put a locator when they're boring so they know where their bore's gonna go in the directional. And for Google Fiber upcoming, we have minimum standard for micro-trenching. And that is a depth between nine and 12 inches, so we don't have them too shallow, nor too deep where they could hit our water lines. We also may have a crack seal required. It depends from my understanding and conversations with city engineers, when you would require that and not when it comes to water penetration and asphalt. I do not pretend to know the details, but we were, we say that that might be required and that the company has to warranty that crack seal if they do for 24 months. Next slide, the last portion, the last component of these amendments is it adds a penalty for damaging Chavino Park water infrastructure in the right-of-way. And since 2021, again, this is the part where we've learned some lessons. There has been, at times, from my understanding, talking to the Polos, contractors fairly negligent and they damage water surface lines, water mains. We have no capability in our ordinance today to bring the hammer down, so to speak, on those, those contractors that are negligent. I want to, uh, point out that the way written, this director has authority to waive this penalty. Rarely, and I told Bill this, rarely, when I propose this to him, rarely in our ordinances do we try to be punitive, do we try to punish somebody? That's, we want compliance, but if you don't have the hammer in your back pocket for the contractor that just takes the rock saw and goes right through your service line without calling to locate, then you don't, you can't bring down the hammer on them. Of course, in the, when you're out doing construction, you're doing locate, sometimes we don't properly locate. Sometimes we have a really good working relationship with a contractor like D and D, we don't wanna bring the hammer down on them. Johnny, we're out there to make those calls. But this provides a calculation. I highlighted in blue, you can see all the different elements of it, but there's a minimum water charge. We're charging them for them, we have to take our small water crew off projects they're working on to come over and repair the service line that they hit. It takes out the water service to the customer. All those things are captured in this proposed penalty calculation. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any specific questions on underground boring, the standards we had, the street cuts and stuff, I do have Johnny here to help me answer those as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna open this up for discussion before we have a motion. Lee, you have a question? Without objection, without, without objection. Lee?
Are we in a GIF position to where we can tell people where they use to use, use a lot of caution? Do we know where every pipeline, et cetera, is now at this time? I know we've been talking about mapping it for years. Are we there?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
You're right, though, we're getting closer.
Yeah, we are getting closer, but if someone comes in and wants to do, say, a bore, which is very clean, very expensive, won't they be doing the job for us by finding this for us? I mean, that'll be included in part of it, will it not?
Yes, yes and no, uh, there are some contractors typically that they get paid boring by the foot and the faster they get in the ground, the faster they get a paycheck. I've seen numerous occasions when they don't even take a Vactron out to, to pothole for any kind of infrastructure and you do put a, a direct line right over your water main, you know, indicating there is blue. We put six inches or 12 inches on each side of that line to, to let them know, hey, use, use 24 inches of caution between the left and the right of this water line, and they don't, they don't hydro-excavate, they don't do anything, causing major problems not only for residents, but, but for the water system itself, sometimes impacting, you know, half the water system, if you're on two pressure planes, we're on one, so one vital, one wrong move can cause really big problems for us because we are just on one pressure plane. Meaning that our water system can lose all that water from that one point just for a lack of them not wanting to come out and take the extra two hours to find that line. And, yeah, we might be off, you know, let's say it's 24 inches, we're off six inches. Um, they, they, they don't even give us that courtesy call to say, hey, um, we didn't find your line. They'll just put that machine on, turn it on 100 miles an hour, bore right through the line. You know, causing a huge breakage.
We've seen that.
Yes, sir, and that'll happen.
So, so we have GPSed all our fire hydrants. Now, we've GPSed a number of the, the valves. And even still, we find more valves as they go that haven't been GPSed. Certainly all the, uh, as built on Northwest Military Highway. We've got good reads on that based upon the plans, we know where the plans were. Some of this new stuff probably is not GPS, but one of our goals this year is to GPS map the water lines across the water system. We haven't got a cost estimate of that yet, uh, it's one of our to-dos that we wanna do, but we wanna get to where we, we do two things. We wanna know where our, our pipes are, what type of material, what size they are. And then the second major thing we wanna do is we wanna do a major water system study in which we know what our pressures are and what equipment we have and how we might be able to improve it or, or, or we wanna know what we currently have. So I did locate a water pressure study from 20 years ago, maybe 30 years ago. It's interesting because they made some recommendations, some of which have been implemented. Like the Hubner tank, the ground storage tank wasn't there as part of the, that study, they, we built, we built that, et cetera.
And, and to add to Bill, we, we currently now, we add a tracer wire in any infrastructure that we're putting in. So all the crossings, they have a tracer wire. All of Northwest Military, anything that we're putting in has a tracer wire, it's just a, a way to conduct electricity from point A to point B and creating a, a live line of electricity. So we can actually go through and wand our line and get a more accurate location on where that line is. Whether it's six feet, 10 feet, uh, off on Warbler, because it is, it's a bore, we have, that line there is seven foot deep. Just because it is a bore across Northwest Military and all of that does have a tracer wire to give us a more accurate indication on where everything is in the ground.
Okay, Pete?
Yeah, so this is more clarification than anything else, so one of the things I've learned is never say never, right? So one of the, it, it does say in here that cutting a, a street that's, the PCI is greater than, than 86 is prohibited. But it also allows an exception saying that the, the director upon agreement from the city engineer may approve the, the cutting of that. So, and, and to me, that's, that's a, uh, it's an acceptable provision, I think you need to have that in there. But one of the things I want clarity on is when we say director, it wasn't, it says, Bill, that you are the director or your designee, and if we cut a street that's above PCI of 86, I think you're the one that needs to make that call, is my comment.
Yeah, and, and of course, I'm sure that Bill is going to oversee those things with, uh, a lot of prudence. But, uh, you know, there, there is a reason to allow Bill to designate a lot of the day-to-day things, uh, and.
And, and I understand for streets that are below the, the 86, but when we say it's prohibited, I, I would like him deeply involved in that, that decision.
Well, and I agree with you.
This currently says director, I read that as the director of Polos Works, not the city manager.
Yeah, well, as, as far as waiving the, uh, the, the penalties, uh, I think that that's you. I don't think our directors have the authority to give away the money of the city council, ever. I, I, you know, you have the authority because you are the manager of the city, but I don't think Brenda would expect that she has the authority to give away our funds. And she would go, come to you and say, well, Bill, this is your decision because that, that's at your pay grade, it's not at any of the director's pay grades. So when I'm reading this, I'm thinking like Pete is, that the director is the city manager or is designee. And you can make a designation for a number of these items, but you should, I also think Pete and I would both recommend that you reserve certain authorities under this ordinance exclusively to the city manager. Not, you know, we're not saying we'd necessarily have to have that in the ordinance, but just as a practice, that that should be your decision because that's where the rubber meets the road. And, and that's your call when the rubber meets the road, it's not the director's call. Is that what you're saying?
That's where I'm too, I just, it's when you're involved in the implementation of something, it's good to have somebody with objective eyes.
Pete, you're not quite close enough. Pete, you're not quite close enough.
Oh, I'm not on.
Okay.
So when you have somebody that's involved in the construction or the operation of it, it's good to have somebody who is not involved in that direct operation when you're talking about certain things. And, and money is a good one. And also, you know, cutting of these streets, I think is a good one. I've got one more question to you.
Go ahead, please.
So...
It was your topic. I interjected on your topic, I'm sorry.
The, the other question I have is, the section on micro trenching was written a little bit different than, than the, the cutting of the streets. So just want clarification on the micro trenching, is, is that acceptable or not acceptable?
So, micro trenching is acceptable. It's far less invasive and damaging. The way it's defined to differentiate the two is it's less than two inches in width of a cut, whereas a open street cut is considered more than two inches. That's a, that's the way we defined it, as a way to break those apart. And come, you know, talking with the city engineer, the main impact that a micro trench can have when it comes to a road, now again, Google Fiber, these brand new roads that we're building right now with D and D are not going to micro trench in there. Everything I've talked with them, because it's all aerial, it's cheaper for them to do it than micro trenching. But I can't say what they're going to do over north of us in those neighborhoods or in Chauvin O Estates, Creek and so, so forth. But the main thing a micro trench can do is that exactly what we're talking about with cold joints, you cut into that solid piece of asphalt, you introduced a cold joint, and that's what the crack seal is for. Now, Google Fiber, they say that apparently a lot of neighborhoods don't like the aesthetic appeal of having a black crack seal over, over aged asphalt. I think we as a city would be much more intent on protecting the, the integrity of the road than simply an aesthetic choice. But I thought that would be better to give that as more discretionary than a blanket you have to do a crack seal.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Why twenty-four months on your warranty? You know, we're, we're putting down roads that we're hoping will last a generation. And for somebody to give us a twenty-four month warranty on something that we hope is going to last a generation seems short. I, I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but, you know, whenever I do somebody's work as an attorney, I kind of have that responsibility until they have knowledge that I did something that was wrong. And so I'm not exactly sure that I appreciate something that's, somebody going to tell me, hey, for twenty-four months, I'm going to be on the hook for this.
So, so the, the blanket in the ordinance pre-existing even these amendments is actually, it's a one year. You have to, basically you can be called back if a trench, have partial trench failure, goes into specifics like that, it's a one year, you have to come back and fix it.
I, I would say that that was wholly inadequate, but I'm thinking that two years, but Pete, you had a question or a comment.
So, yeah, Mayor, so I, I don't just, I don't disagree with you yet. You know, when you look at streets that are, have longevity of, of what we're talking about, one year seems short, but I always think it's important, no matter how thin you slice it, there's always two sides of the equation. So the flip side of it is if you require more than a year, you're, you're going to pay for it. I mean, one is it's going to be harder to get contractors, two, it's going to be, they're going to charge you very high rates. So, so it comes, it comes at a cost.
Maggie.
Well, is there a usual and customary graph in here somewhere? Is this unusual or what's, what's out there in the world?
I will say when we were negotiating with D and D and the contract, the performance bond is only...
I think it's one year.
One year, yeah, it's only one year. And to do two years was, I remember in discussions with the engineer, that would be considered as an, as an organization, contracts would look down upon that. They would go, whoa.
Okay.
It, it would take us, you'd be stepping beyond the bounds of what normal and customary, basically.
So that's outside the norm.
So, yeah, the performance bond for the, for the street projects is one year.
We're, we're talking really about fiber coming in for the internet. And it serves a certain number of, of our citizens. And we're really looking forward to having the gig, the gig fiber available to everybody in the community. However, when those routes, when those roads are failing because of those cuts being made, the ninety percent of the community that's not being served by fiber is paying for that. And so from a balancing standpoint, should that be a cost that is borne by the ninety percent of the community so that we can have a convenience for the ten percent of the community serviced by that particular area of lineage? And, and I don't know. That, that is a question that we all have to come to. Frankly, I'd like for people to provide their work in a workman-like manner. I understand that bonds are only good for one year, but you know what? D and D is not subject to that bonding requirement. That is a contractor that has said, we will provide a bond and if there is a failure and you don't complete the job the way that it's supposed to be done, you can come to us and we're an insurance company. But at the end of the day, D and D is personally responsible to that bonding company for all the money that they're out. D and D is also responsible for any of the substandard work that is performed under that contract. And they have a continuing liability. You think about home repairs. Home repairs are good today in Texas. You replace a roof, it's, it's a ten-year contract, I believe now. Warranties are ten years now. That's a, that's on homeowners. And we're, we're talking about roads, things that are really much, they're, it's pretty simple. You put it down, there are structural engineering requirements. I just think two years is a long enough period of time for our citizens to be placed on the hu- hook at the end of two years. Conrad.
Just a quick question, what streets are being proposed for micro trenching? Do we know that yet?
No, they, they haven't given us any permits for what they're going to do in any areas. We, we had our, our pre-construction meeting with their team, they brought like six or seven of their people. And there, they confirmed the same thing that they told city council back in August is that everything in the old side is going to be aerial in their planning. Same way on Bike Way, I know for sure they're planning aerial in there. I, I really talked to one of the linemen who was doing the planning, he said, yeah, we're doing aerial.
Yeah, seems like this micro trenching should be something...
It will, it will be in HOAs, which doesn't concern us, I know.
Well, it, it is very limited for the city. It's Chauvin O Creek. Buddy, what are, what are your thoughts? Because your citizens...
Well, the streets are about enough as it is. Okay, so we won't go there.
That's right. And, and in the next eight to ten years, you know, maybe, maybe the idea is micro trenching is available until 2030. And then, then you can no longer do micro trenching in Chauvin O Park. Because we're going to replace all those roads. We're going to resurface all of them eventually.
Yeah, but I, I know what you're, I know what the contention is, is that, that we have enough fill as it is on a lot of those streets. And, I mean, for them to just put these, this black additional line on the streets and if it doesn't hold, we're going to have all kinds of issues out there.
So they micro trenched right in front of my house. They did a saw cut across one inch and then all of my curbs. And then they, they put the cable in, Google did, and then they, they filled it up with quick mix, the concrete, and then on top of that, they put the seal coat on it. I'm not sure how it would fail, frankly. I mean, I, I just think it could, but I, I'm not sure how it would. I think the risk associated with that is, seems to be very small to me from that.
Well, I, I guess one of the things I'm thinking is, just from a policy standpoint, we're going to be spending in the next twenty years, thirty million dollars on our roads. Do we really want people cutting our roads? Until, until the point that we've spent some of that money? You know, Buddy, I, I think that we could probably get by, although as much as I love the, what those lines that y'all have done on Chauvin O and Fawn and throughout, it is like going through a tank trap every time and you have that continual bump and your citizens are going to be angry about that if those roads fail after we've done the reconstruction. And whose problem is it's going to be? We would have let it happen, but they're going to blame the current city council members. And I don't know that we should be handing that baton off to the city council members who succeed us if we could have said, golly, this is an acceptable building technique until 2030 and after that, it's just not an acceptable building technique. Takes care of today's problem, gives us two years with Google Fiber. What do y'all think about that as an idea?
In the proposed ordinance, that was, and actually in the existing ordinance that was already passed in section thirty-four, twenty-three, I think, section C, it says, "All repairs to the right of way of any PCI," so of any street, "are guaranteed by the contractor making the repair and the permitting, causing the repair to be made for the life of the street. All repairs are guaranteed for that life based upon whatever that life expectancy of that street is. The life of the street for these purposes is defined to be until such time as a certain street or right of way is repaved by the street or another in the same location as the excavation."
Okay. Pete.
So I do think the new ordinance captures your concern. It says that, basically that you can't cut new streets. If you replace PCI eighty-six with new streets, it basically says the public streets that are new can't, can't be cut, it's prohibited.
But what about the current streets?
What's that?
I mean, that's what we are concerned.
If you have, if you have a current street and it's below eighty-six, which yours would be, right? There's some, because they're, they're older, they're older streets, they can cut them.
Because unlike any, like, unlike the other two, Bentley Manor and Pond Hill, we know, we're not gated. We have, it's become more of a thoroughfare, a high thoroughfare because of Heebner and Lock Hill Summer now, and people trying to go away from, we're getting more and more traffic in that area. And as, as we've seen, the two places, the entry off Heebner and the entry off Lock Hill Summer, I mean, the wear and tear is just unbelievable now. I mean, it's become an issue. I mean, the water mains on both sides are up protruding outside, up above the street. So, yeah, any, any, any issue that we have, other than the stuff that's self-instigated through traffic, is going to be a huge concern for the citizens in the area.
One of those, one of those streets is going to be repaired, isn't it?
Yeah, Post Oak Way, we intend to, we will completely, probably mill and overlay that to, to standard.
Which would meet the new standard, but, and then as far as cutting into that street, they're not going to be able to cut in that street.
Well, again, they're cutting one inch from the curb. I mean, they're cutting along the curb one inch only. That's where my, my, my house. And you can't even tell it's there. There may be an occasional crossing, but, you know...
Well, it's the crossings we're concerned about. It's not next to the curb.
Yeah.
Although there could be some...
But they dig down nine, twelve inches, when they put the concrete in there to backfill it, that'll be stronger than what you actually have with, you know, seven or eight, maybe six inches of, of concrete, seven inches of concrete, of asphalt, I'm sorry. So, when we get to Chauvin O Park Creek, I'm sure that the Chauvin O Creek Homeowners Association is going to say, oh, yeah, we're good with this, or they're, they're not good with it.
Well, I, I would certainly solicit the comments from the HOA before we have a final reading on this. Conrad.
Sounds like it's getting more expensive for the, the micro trenching. So maybe that's your takeaway here a little bit.
Okay, Lee.
Listening to this, I, and I take into account what you said, Mr. Mayor, about the future councils. The future councils will not be us, it'll be the youth of today, and they're not going to want, they're not going to ask, they're going to demand LFO so they can have the fastest speed. It's cheaper to go aerial, and that's the way they'll go to save money. But if aerial is not available because of already existing buried utilities, they're going to micro trench or whatever comes up in the next ten years to replace that. There's always something new coming along. They're, they're going to get it. I mean, as far as ten percent wanting light fiber optic or something akin to that, it's more like ninety percent of the people want to have that in their home so they can watch their television shows and pay a fee. So I, I think that the business about micro trenching, if you want to see it, go over to Vance Jackson in front of the Frost Bank and head up towards sixteen oh four, the right-hand side, it's all micro trench. You have to look for it. Now, ten years from now, you may not want to look at it because it looks bad, but it's the standard of operation right now and it's what serves the needs. And until they get, I don't know, Marconi or Tesla out of the ground and teach us how to broadcast this stuff, we're going to have to dig or hang stuff from wooden poles. So I, I don't think it's going to be that big a deal. It's, it's a good, good work ethic, good work effort, but as long as they can underbore and steer it the way they're supposed to, micro trenching is just something we have to put up with.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions, comments? Bill is gone, but we can proceed without him. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance oh twenty-two zero twenty-two, amending chapter thirty-four, article five, public right-of-way management to add micro trenching, street cut and under-street boring standards and additionally add a penalty assessment for damage to Chauvin O Park water utility infrastructure in the public right-of-way as a first reading? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Lee. We're now open for discussion. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries five oh. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item eight point four, public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments from members of the public regarding proposed ordinance reauthorizing the city of Chauvin O Park building permit fees. This will be Bill and Johnny, it looks like. It is now seven fifty-seven, or, and Curtis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to pass it to Curtis.
Curtis?
Thank you again. Go on, next slide. So there's a lot of moving parts to this ordinance. Traditionally, city council likes to place all the fees in one schedule within the code of warrants. That schedule is completely repeated in this ordinance that you had in your packet because there's so many small amendment changes. I thought it'd be easier for implementation down in to just restate the entire thing. So there's a lot of moving parts. I won't cover a lot of the smaller ones because they're very minor, they're in your packet and happy to go into them if questions, but I'll discuss the bigger moving parts. So the first one is due to a recent legislative change from the Texas Legislature. And it requires every ten years that a city hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing right now, and then hold a vote reauthorizing its building permit fees. And if it, city does, fails to do that, then they automatically expire, can no, no longer enforceable. So there are no changes to the building permit fees, except for a very minor contractor registration portion, which we called out. And otherwise, it's completely restated. But that's why, that's what kind of originally caused us to bring this in front of council and then we added doing reviews and looking at ordinances, many other smaller amendments. Next slide. Another major moving part that I want to cover here is the water debt service fee. So in the twenty-two thirty town plan in the long-range financial planning, it was shown that the water debt service fee revenue that it brings in is not covering the annual cost of the debt service. It was recommended in the twenty-two town plan that it be annually reviewed and the water debt fee is, the fee is at a rate that is ensures that it covers the cost of the debt. So here you can see the calculation, the total debt service, the number of water customers, currently people pay twenty-two fifty-eight every single month in their water bills. It causes a shortfall of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and three dollars. That was shown in the town plan, increasing it three dollars and eighty-one cents to twenty-five seventy-six on every water bill, would bring in that additional twenty-six thousand eight hundred and three to offset the loss. And that, and what that would mean is additional three dollars and eighteen cents on the water bill per month with thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents per year on the water bill. And then I'll bring Johnny up here for, we'll talk about, next slide, the new water fees, because there's quite a few moving parts in there, and I thought Johnny would be best to, to brief you for those.
So the yellow is the new that we're going to be going with, and we're looking at, we'll start off right with the long service. Bores twenty-five feet or more across, across any street, so we're looking at trying to protect our, our new infrastructure being the roads over on the new side. That can come in a situation, every customer on that side or any, anywhere in Chauvin O Park is built out. But there are times and situations when residents need to upsize their water main. Let's say they're adding another zone to their sprinkler system, let's say they're building a pool, et cetera. Let's say they're adding another zone to their sprinkler system. Let's say they're building a pool, et cetera. And we do need to upsize their service to give them a few more gallons per minute that they're actually looking for to adequately be able to run anything within their house. At that point, there would be that up, that upcharge which the resident would have to pay, which is the thirty-seven hundred, the three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That won't completely cover the full bore, being that we are where we are in Chavano Park. It's all, it's all rock. So typically, a bore for us is going to cost around five thousand dollars. We're not trying to get rich or trying to, trying to put all that cost onto the resident. We get it, you know, that's, it's our services as well. So we're willing to take on some of that cost just to allow for the resident to be able to kind of split the bill with us in a sense. And we'll slowly gain our money back with, obviously, a bigger meter. Gives you a bigger rate charge when you go for your monthly bill. So eventually, the city will make their money back. It's just not going to, the residents not going to have to pay a big chunk of money right out up upfront. So that's, that's one of the major ones that we'll be looking at. But anything, any older streets, we will allow them to open cut, and we'll be laying a new service in. So it's only mainly our, our, our older streets, I apologize, that they'll, that they can open cut. New streets, they'll have to get it bored in. Obviously, if the main is on the other side of the street, if the, the main is on the same side as the residence, we're just going to charge them parts and equipment, whatever it is, to upsize it from a five-eighths or a three-quarter inch meter to a one-inch water meter. We'll go down to the non-payments and turn-on and turn-offs. So currently, we don't charge for the, for turn-ons and turn-offs. If a resident's negligent on their bill, we'll, we'll typically, we'll just send an operator out and we will turn their water off and on once they do make those payments. But typically, that's standard operating procedure in every municipality, just about, to turn residents' water on and off and actually get charged for it, you know, when, when they're negligent on their payment. So we won't just turn their bill, turn their water off for one missed payment. So we're going to give them three written notices and give them an advance notice, like, hey, you're late on your bill once. Let them know again. So they'll get three written letters before we actually do implement any kind of fees or anything like that. We're not trying, like I said, we're not trying to nickel and dime. We're trying to just let our residents know, hey, we did have to send an operator out there, which that operator could have been something, doing something detrimental for us, whether laying water line or had a different task at hand. And now we had to assign them to go take care of this, so it's kind of an added duty. So we're just looking at that to cover that fee. We do have a four-inch water line. Basically, that's coming in from, the only thing on a four-inch right now currently is our pavilion outside. I don't see anything in our infrastructure needing to be a four-inch or above, just because that's typically ran for schools, you know, assisted living buildings. Something that's going to require quite a bit of volume, and Chavano Park's pretty much built out within our distribution system. So basically, that's allowing us just to move our funds from the, from the general fund to the water fund and offsetting the costs that way. And then we'll go down to the debt service fee, which Curtis spoke on. And that allows us to be able to put more money in our water fund and, and offset some costs, allow us to do more work within our distribution system in-house. And twenty-six thousand dollars can go a long way when we're doing the work ourselves and we're not having to contract that out. That'll cover quite a bit of fire hydrants, quite a bit of water main, or, hey, a new, newer piece of equipment to help the guys out a whole lot more, whether it's a chop saw or parts and tools that they really, really need. So the, we'll go down to meter repair fees, which is another new one. So installing a meter lid, typically, meter lids are like twenty, thirty bucks. We'll get a lot of replacements. Typically, we replace about ten a year. And the reason we're replacing them is mostly as contractors, they'll go out, they'll, whether put a big, heavy lawnmower right over it, it'll end up breaking a lid, breaking a box. In turn, it kind of causes another side effect, which is actually the cellular point, which I'm going to skip, I'm going to go down one. And because they do go hand-in-hand, if you pull that box up, our cellular devices, that actually communicates with the water meter, will actually get pulled up, and those wires actually have to be replaced as well. Installing the new lid and the new box would be fifty dollars. So every once in a while, the resident will park on a, on a, on a meter box. Or even a contractor just doing, you know, residential repairs, they don't, they don't see it because they're flush to the ground, and they break that. So the resident would be charged the fifty dollars on that. The resident could easily pass that cost on to whoever they may have working out on their property, saying, hey, you know, you parked on top of my meter box, causing our box to get broken. Now, you know, we have a gaping pole in our yard, which the customer has every right to charge a contractor for coming out and damaging their box. If they're going out to fix a radio antenna or, you know, unclog a sink or toilet or, you know, pump a septic tank out. Sometimes septic tanks, the pumping haulers, they'll park out in the, the right-of-way and just extend their hoses out, not really paying attention to what's around them and actually end up, you know, stepping on a box and causing us to have to go back and redig it up and actually put it back ground to, back to level. And emergency line locates, so that's going along with our right-aways. The, we, we have a, we work with eight-one-one, and they typically have a two-hour window when they do have to call us out. So depending on who has to go out, if they live on the northeast side of town or the, whatever side of town they have to go out, we're going to actually have a charge to have the line locator go out, and if they're calling in a false line locate, let's just say it's, they want to do a job and they're calling in an emergency. That happens quite often. A gas contractor doesn't want to wait two days because they want to take care of a job in San Antonio to go over to Bernie to do another job. Well, they're going to call in a false line locate, and that happens pretty often, to be honest with you. And when that does happen, that's actually a cost that we'll give to the contractor, not to the resident, because only contractors call in line locates. Well, residents can call in line locates to do any kind of private work around their property. But typically, water, we just mark clear out on the road. Or if the water main is on their side in the right-of-way, we'll mark our water main. But for the most part, if they're calling in an emergency and it's not an emergency, we can actually, now we have it in our ordinance, in our, like Curtis said, you know, it's a tool in our, in our back pocket to actually charge that, that contractor to be able to recoup some of our losses, especially for time that the guys had to go out and actually do that line locate. Anybody got any questions? Sorry.
Okay.
That concludes the staff's presentation.
Okay. Are there any citizen questions? There being no citizen questions, it is now eight-oh-eight. The public hearing portion of this agenda item is closed. But now brings us to item eight point five, Discussion Action Ordinance O twenty-two-three zero-two-one, "Updating the City of Chavano Park Fee Schedule to Reauthorize Permit Fees. Increase the Water Debt Service Fee. Institute Various Water Rate Fees and Minor Amendments to Improve Realibility and Consistency." Bill, do you want to add anything before we? Curtis, do y'all have anything new to add?
No, I will say, there are obviously a lot of other moving parts. I'm happy to answer those questions on those. And I failed to mention that the water fees portion that Johnny just covered, that did come from WAC all the way back in May. And originally, Brandon Peterson, the director then, was the one who presented that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
And then one other point is that the actual debt service fee increase that's been proposed, we did that based upon what was in the town plan and what we thought previous councils, and we're proposing that to you.
Yeah.
It has not been reviewed by the WAC, and I think I sent a note out to all of you saying that it is on the agenda for the December WAC meeting. And we won't have a December meeting. We'll probably have a January WAC meeting. And then we'll have two shots at that with the WAC, and we can, we can update you in the January meeting, assuming we don't have a December city council meeting. If there's any issues within the WAC or any adjustments that we're going to recommend.
Okay. Conrad?
Just curious about San Antonio's water rate compared to Chavano's.
Water rate itself?
Correct. Per thousand, whatever, five thousand?
Well, I've, I've got actually the billing rate on my desk now, if you want me to get it. But essentially, if you just looked at it, the actual rate for water usage is comparably, comparable in San Antonio to the city of Chavano Park. Admittedly, Chavano Parks is higher for a low-water user and then lower when you get to the high-end users. In addition, the city of San Antonio charges a water usage fee, which for high-water use is actually more than double than what Chavano Park would be. We don't charge that water usage fee. Now, they don't have a debt service fee. They have some other things that they charge that we don't, but, yeah.
Maggie?
Unless I missed it, when was the last time we increased that fee?
Yeah, that was when, well, I can tell you it was within, what, five, six years ago, Mike?
It was twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Was when?
Twenty nineteen.
Nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
Yes.
And how much was that?
That's where I think we went up from about five dollars to the current twenty?
Twenty-two fifty-eight.
Okay. Anybody? Conrad?
I'm just going to add, like, there, what I'd like to see on this is, it doesn't need to be comparable, but something so that citizens really understand why this is. It's just a pass-on of cost to maintain service. And I think that's really important to do that here and to do it everywhere else where we can.
Yeah, we can do that. In fact, Johnny may already have it available. Johnny, do you have the other fees that, we can put this in a packet for the next time. But Johnny, you have a review of the fees from the other cities?
I do not, not at all, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Okay?
We'll, we'll provide that for the next meeting.
Okay. Pete?
Is there a, is there a variance fee?
Uh, yes. It is.
Can you say a little bit about the variance fee?
It's three hundred and fifty dollars for whether or not someone comes with a variance, a special exception, or just a general appeal under the Texas law. It's a flat three fifty. And that has not been reviewed since Bill and I have worked here, certainly.
So with that fee, if we do have people come in and it costs us more for legal fees and things like that, we eat those fees?
We do. We eat that.
Yes.
So has there been any thought to how we could structure that to where we keeps the city whole?
Yeah, so I actually sent, and have discussed this with the mayor. And this all came apart, came about because one of the agenda items we're, we're working in the Planning and Zoning Commission is to resurrect the Building Construction Appeals Board. And so what we had done was we had eliminated that and made the Board of Adjustment act as that appeals board without changing the name. And then consultation with the attorney, we needed to resurrect that up. Now, we've never had an appeal. But part of that discussion that Curtis worked and we generated was what is the appropriate fee? And we looked at the variance fee, and then Curtis did some work, and I think we're about seven fifty, eight hundred. And then it dawned on me, well, what does it actually cost for us to do the variance? So I went back and looked at the attorney's fee for the last variance hearing. And that wasn't even Dan. That was, Dan's a partner. And so it was, it was one of the associates. And that was six hundred, and I'm going to get it wrong, twenty-nine dollars. Then I asked Kristen to look at what the fees were for publication notice, because we had to publish it in the newspaper twice, and that was over six hundred dollars. And there's a small fee for copying, you know, for mailing, maybe ten bucks. But you're talking about fees are about twelve. And, and actually, the verbiage in the public hearings varies based upon the complication of the variance. And the one we just are doing now, Thursday, is fairly complicated, so it's got a long notice. So somewhere between a thousand and twelve hundred dollars is probably the true direct cost of a variance hearing and a special exceptions hearing, or any of these other hearings that involve an attorney and public notice.
So I, I know, based on what Johnny just said, so as you look at our fee structure, our fee structure is not to penalize people, but it's to keep the city whole. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. And so as, as you look at the fee statement, or the fees for the variance at three, what are they, three eight?
Three fifty.
Three fifty, right. That probably doesn't cover our cost. Would it be reasonable to increase that? And what Bill's saying is it's probably a thousand dollars, right? Is what we're, what we're paying out of pocket for variance.
I think that it's reasonable to increase it. It hadn't been increased in years. I know that when I'm dealing with citizens that want to appeal and do a variance, three fifty in some cases is, you know, deters them, in some cases, in most cases, it doesn't. If, if somebody has a, they don't have a real good shot at doing a variance, of actually having it approved, they're not going to want to throw three fifty away. No one wants to do that. But it's not, it's, you know, it's not a significant amount. I don't know that we have to recoup all the cost, but I think we certainly should raise it. And, you know, the other thing that I was thinking in my mind is variances are supposed to be something that someone can request if they have a hardship and that they're trying to have an authorized use, but there's circumstances that may be unusual and not caused by them to be able to do that. So I don't know that we want to price them out just purposely. We want it, I, I would think you want some middle ground in there that you're recovering most of your, your cost, but you're still making it, you're not making it cost prohibitive. I mean, if you said two thousand dollars for a variance hearing, nobody would probably apply for it. But I don't think that's what we want. We want reasonable requests, I would just think.
So, so Bill, you have given this a lot of thought. Is there an amount that you would think would be reasonable and fair?
I would like to come back, think about that and come back to you when we present this for the second reading and just, and then say, here's a couple of options.
Okay.
And I can.
Conrad?
You know, we don't want to deter people, but I think there are a few times that this has come in and maybe gone above the thousand-dollar mark. So I would assume, because your average is, you're saying it's a thousand dollars, right? And somebody's asking for something that's, they already know is outside the bounds, asking for, you know, the variance. And so if you're coming and asking for this, that there ought to be an expectation that's, that's going to cost something. And we don't want to ladle that cost on the rest of our citizens, and especially for one person's ask. It seems to me important to, like, we, going back to the water, to apply that same philosophy everywhere. And we're not in it, certainly, to make money. We're not designed that way. We're not supposed to do it that way. If you're going to come in and ask that city for that extra work, then the extra dollars should be applied because it, they both go hand-in-hand. And maybe looking at something to where, I would assume that those higher-end dollar figures that come in, that maybe there ought to be something there that gives, that gives thought to pursuing it further for the, for the citizen asking for that variance. And so if they, let's say if they give, you know, a thousand dollars, but maybe it's only six hundred dollars, that they get something back for that. Or if they want to keep escalating it and we have to do some more studies or work, whatever it is, that if they get above, let's say, two thousand, then they're going to be responsible for a lot of it if we get too far out. And I think that's reasonable and something that would be expected if you're doing that much work. The cities haven't needed that much extra work.
That's certainly an option, and it's a valid, valid option.
Okay, yeah. Y'all have heard Pete and Conrad. Is that something that y'all would like to see in the next version that we're going to?
I, I think that we could see it, but it has to be reasonable.
Yeah.
It definitely has to be reasonable because there's an implicated cost as a municipality to provide a service to the constituents, no matter what the cost. And at some point, we have to say, is it too much for somebody extraordinary to bear that cost? And, I mean, that's just a part of public sector finance, and so we just got to be careful on that.
And, and there probably could be hardship exceptions that we could ride into our, our fees? That, yeah, a wheelchair ramp. Hey, you're going to have to build your wheelchair ramp into your thirty-five-foot setback. And by the way, this is a hardship. And so, by golly, we And so, by golly, we could certainly help those people. But most of these folks, it's like, oh, wow, I've got this really cool tree in the backyard, but, but we've decided we need a swimming pool. And so we need to get this 15-foot variance in our backyard. It's like, you're gonna go spend $50,000 and you're going to tell the city of Chavano Park that we should pay for the $650 to get you your variance on the publication of your fee. It's like, the wheelchair ramp, I understand the wheelchair ramp, the swimming pool...
It's accessory buildings, I mean, we're gonna get into all kinds of things. We, we've been there, done that.
Yeah.
I mean, so, yeah. So I think a reasonable fee is tolerable, but as long as we're not excessive.
Okay. Well, and, and if we always return the excess money like Conrad suggested, then it's like, this is a hard cost. You know, this is what the citizens are out of pocket as opposed to, yeah, we're making money off of this. In fact, if you look back, and Lee's old enough on City Council, back when he was on City Council, we talked about these fees. When Mary was on City Council, I was the chairman of Plan and Zoning. And the idea was, well, this fee is really intended to recoup the cost of providing our staff involvement in this process. You think about Bill's salary, you think about Curtis's salary, Kristen's salary, everybody, Johnny's salary, you think about all of those salaries that go into this. And we decided, and this is almost two decades ago, that $350 was a good fee. It's like, man, if, if I could, if I could get $350 out of $350 today, we'd all be geniuses. So, so that, that's a point. Okay, going through, a couple of more questions. Johnny, why aren't we paying the full cost of boring? You know, this is somebody that has decided that they won't, yeah, the incremental cost to get $20 a month of additional fee for us on an extra $2,000 is going to take us six years to get our money back? I don't think that six years on an interest-free loan to get the money back, I don't know why they're not paying 100% of their boring costs.
And we could definitely review it and we'll bring it back with the full cost and...
Well, we also have the sleeves that we put in. And so in so many areas where we already have the sleeves in place, and I'm assuming that we're gonna be doing sleeves on the, on the west side when we do the road repairs, right?
Yes, sir.
And so if we've got the sleeves in place, then we're not looking at boring, because we've got that big sleeve that we're, you know, it's a six-incher, six-incher, right?
No, services are two-inch sleeves.
They're all two-inch sleeves that we're putting, that we're installing?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember exactly.
It's two-inch. The, a sleeve for a, for a one-inch service is two inches.
Okay, I thought we had uniform sleeves that we were putting in to be able to replace the service lines?
We do, we do. But I think they're two-inch.
Okay.
We can verify that, but...
Yeah, service lines are two-inch, and then when we're crossing six-inch mains, we have 12-inch casings, because it's typically twice the diameter of the pipe.
Okay.
So if the resident has a one-inch service and they're looking for inch and a half, we would have to bore in probably a three-inch, four-inch casing to get that two-inch or inch and a half.
Well, is it hypothetically possible, if you had a two-inch, you could slip a one-and-a-half-inch in there?
Uh, yes, sir, we can.
Okay.
Okay.
I can't imagine that we're going to have any, maybe one requirement every 10 years for this. I mean, I'm just guessing.
Okay.
We've got all new sleeves and all new service lines put in there.
Uh, the final thing is the shut-off. I, I've done co-op work more decades than some of the people in this room are old, a long, long time ago. And, you know, people had to travel to do the turn-ons and the shut-offs. And it's, the idea was, we're going to compensate the city, or the co-op, or whoever is providing this service for the time that it takes to send somebody out there. I did a little bit of math based upon how big our footprint is in Chavano Park and how close Public Works is. And I realized that if we get paid $60 for a turn-on and a shut-off, that we're going to be making New York City attorneys billing rates. Now, I like attorneys, some of them at least. And to be charging New York City attorney rates to turn the water on and off for our citizens strikes me as being a little bit draconian, because from anywhere in the city, it's gonna take five minutes for our Public Works people to reach that location.
Uh, yes, sir. And, and that's, that's mainly, the price itself is when they're already gone, when the operator's at his house, and he, the resident does come home and they're like, hey, we, we don't have water, and it's...
Well, I, I understand an after-hours fee, but that's not how it's proposed. It's, this is the fee all the time. And, and for most of these folks, the, the shut-off fee is going to happen, if it's for non-payment, it's going to happen during the daytime hours, during scheduled work days. And, and if it's after-hours and somebody has an emergency, they're gonna call me and I'm going to go and turn the water off, because it's happened about a dozen times so far.
Or the water, Fire Department.
And, or the Fire Department. And chief, you guys are even better than the mayor has been in turning water on and off for people. I wanna, wanna commend you. So charging $60, you know, let's relook at that, at how we're doing that. So, okay, does anybody have anything else? Pete?
I, I was looking at your rates and thought they were pretty reasonable, especially for the, for the water covers. I, I was thinking, I'm on saws, but if mine ever breaks, I'm gonna call you to come replace mine. So what, what, my real comment is, one of the things that would be helpful, this is just the first reading on these fees, one of the things that you mentioned is that next time you would come, is you'd be able to show us the fees that other places are charging. And to me, again, you wanna be reasonable and fair, and it kinda goes back to what Buddy was saying, is that you wanna be able to compare and be reasonable and fair for the services that we provide and be in line with what other people, what other cities are providing. So if you could show us how ours compared to other cities, I think that would be helpful.
And I'll do cities our size.
Yeah, subject to, subject to public revolt from half of our citizens, because our water system is really much more like a co-op than it is a, than it is a, an enterprise fund for the city of Chavano Park. It's really much more like a co-op. Okay, so all of that said and done, we have a, do I have a motion to approve ordinance O-2023-021, updating the city of Chavano Park? Fee schedule to reauthorize permit fees, increase the water debt service fee, institute various new water fees and minor amendments to improving readability and consistency. This is a first reading.
With an addition. And the addition is what Bill promises, that he would come back for the variance fee.
Right. Yes, with the variance fee.
And propose a variance fee.
Yes.
And so, so moved.
Yes. With a variance fee.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Buddy. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Town plan work group. Item 8.6, discussion action, consideration of the establishment of four-person work group to provide guidance to city council on how best to prioritize and develop a multi-year execution plan for the action items contained in the 2023 town plan. Pete?
Administrative question, Mayor.
Yes, point and procedure.
Looking at the agenda here, I'm not sure we have a need for the attorney at this point in time. We're two hours into the meeting with, if Lester's a, he and I have talked. We've kinda, we've kinda huddled about this, and we thought this might be a good...
Okay. Well, I love having Dan with us, but I don't know that I needed him the whole meeting. Ooh. Just kidding.
We're right at the two-hour mark, which is no big deal, but there's really no legal aspects in here.
Dan, thank you very much for your time with us.
Yes, sir. Thanks for your input.
He provided a lot of input, really, on a lot of these other ones as we went through the development, so...
I know a lot of recovery attorneys.
Okay. And he'd like to charge the water rate, turn-off fee per minute. Okay. Pete?
Yep. So one of the things that I wanna go back and, you know, P and Z and Curtis and Bill helped guide and drive the town plan and did, did an excellent job. Matter of fact, when you look at the town plan, it has got opportunities galore. And so as you look at this slide, I know you can't read any of the lines that are below there on all the, the small text, but those are all the opportunities that are in our town plan. And one of the things I, I think is critical, if you're gonna be successful in any type of implementation, it's important to be able to prioritize and plan your execution. And successful executions prioritize, they have clear scopes and objectives, they identify the resources they need, they have timing and scheduling considerations, and they look at their risk. So what, what I'm proposing is that because this, this town plan is so extensive and, and we really need to manage kind of our resources, and we can't do all this at once, is to determine how you implement all this stuff. And so the, the whole purpose of this proposal is to put a four-man team together, work group. And the work group would come back and provide city council with some thoughts on how we prioritize and execute this, this plan.
But, but not provide a laundry list of how we're going to execute them in order, it's...
No, it's not, it's not the, it's, it's, it's the process that you would organize this.
Okay, like in having citizen meetings?
Yep, could be citizens' meeting, town halls, could, could be that.
Okay. Okay?
That's it.
Oh, okay. Well, Pete, it's, it's your item, do you, are you going to make a motion?
Okay, so, yeah, so, so the motion is that we, we put a four-person work group together in order to develop a successful execution plan for the 2023 town plan.
Consisting of, you didn't, you need to name the people.
Oh. So what, what I would propose is, I would propose that first Bill needs to be intimately involved in this. I, I think Bill needs to be one of the members. I also think the mayor needs to be one of the members. And then I think there needs to be two people on, on council to, to be part of this. And I would suggest that the mayor and Bill pick whoever they want to be on this team, and God rest their souls.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion to have a plan on how we're going to, a recommendation for a plan to be presented to city council to prioritize and execute the recommendations in the 2023 town plan with a committee consisting of four people to include the city manager and the mayor? We have that motion from Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We are now open for discussion. Yes, Lee?
I'm looking at the big screen that I can read. Four people, four columns of 12 to 14 items. Eisenhower had more staff for D-Day.
Well, we, we don't have to, we don't have to come up with D-Day. All we have to do is to put together the plan on how we're going to plan for D-Day.
I, I don't think there are that many moving parts in my Tesla.
So, so, so Lee, you were here when we did the first town plan.
I sure was.
And we did a swat and a swim, and we had a facilitator.
Right.
And so that might be a recommendation, or it may be, hey, we're going to, we're going to have each one of the city council members select two people from the community who are going to meet with a small group from, a working group from city council, and they're going to come back with a recommendation, series of recommendations. That may, that may or may not be the idea. But I think Pete's saying, we need to get citizen buy-in on how we're going to implement the next five years of the town plan.
It's absolutely essential, it's absolutely essential to get the citizen involved in this, because the genius of this city is not on this dais. It's out there in the houses, asleep now.
And so instead of Pete coming up and saying, this is my plan on how to reach out to the citizens, he's suggesting that a four-person committee come up with a plan that comes back to city council, kinda like setting up a working group to make recommendations on how we're going to reach out to the community. And then council gets to say, yes, that makes sense, let's do the, every council member gets to select two people for this committee.
I like it.
Type of approach. But that, that's just spitballing. That was not a plan, and nobody's discussed that plan at all.
It sounds real practical.
And one, one other, one, one other thing that I'll add to this whole thing is I think we need to have this done before May, before we start into the budget cycle, because I, I think this feeds the budget cycle. That whatever, out of these items, whatever kind of handful of items that we come up with that we wanna implement next year, that, that this team needs to help provide that guidance.
Okay. Okay, before we, before we take a vote or anything like that, I just wanna confirm, Bill, that you would be willing to serve on the committee.
Of course I would. And, and just, just to remind you, you know, you can come up with a plan, but it has, you know, the real action is implemented after the goals and objectives as part of the budget process are validated and approved by city council. And there's only so much you can actually do in a year. So I, I really think that there's, out of all these things, very few things that will actually come out of it in a given year, and it'll be more of a timeline for sequencing it and prioritizing it. And then priorities and opportunities change. You got an, you got a plan that's an outline, one year you move something up and you move something back, and, and you, you've kinda got it, but you're looking at the risk management, like, what do we need to do right away? What can we defer? What should we be working on to get it ready for it? So, you know...
Well, it's a lot, lot like what we've done on the road plan.
We've intuitively done it already, it's just this formalizes it a little bit more, and it gives you an opportunity to get citizen input.
Yeah, and, and hopefully to get people's juices going and say, golly, I'd really like to be at the dais as well, which I think some of us would be very happy with. Buddy?
No, and, and I agree. And Pete, I, I think it's a great idea. And when I went through all the fine print that you had here this afternoon, and when Bill sent the email this morning, I went through it and I thought back, I said, some of those sections took us seven, eight months when we were doing the town plan. And before we knew it, we're doing a new town plan, because we found out that those were the old ways, and we needed to change it. And some of those items, like, like Bill said, by the time we get to them, the year's gone. And, I mean, I, I guess it's a good to have a committee to help prioritize some of these events, but it's, it's, it's a moving target. I mean, it's constantly changing. So, I mean, it'll be like a good effort. I, I just don't know if, within a year's time, we can accomplish as much as we want, because it always spills over into the next council. I mean, even with planning and zoning, we were constantly changing members, constantly updating, and by the time we knew it, we had new members come in, we were updating those members, and then we were, we were back at it. I mean, it was, took us like two, three years just to do the town, to update the town plan.
And of course, it's also like our goals and objectives. Every single year, council comes together, and what Bill was alluding to, we sit down and we formulate the goals and objectives based on last year's goals and objectives. We bring forward the items that we weren't able to complete. We celebrate the items that were completed. And, you know, there are a lot of items on here, and many of them will not be completed in the next five years. But we get to have citizen input to say, Pete's suggesting we have citizen input to say, yes, this is what we're doing. Much like we got our citizen input for the roads. We got an 85% approval rating on the roads in an election that didn't have anything else out there, but people got to focus just on that. And that was an important decision for our community. So I, I agree with you. Okay, any other discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 8.7, discussion, city secretary's six-month assessment. It looks like Christine has joined us.
I'm still awake, I'm cold, but I'm awake. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Next slide, please. As you're probably more familiar than I am with this, every six months after hiring a new director, you ask them to provide an assessment of their departments, just an evaluation, fresh set of eyes coming in and looking at it. I did look at what I consider the city secretary's office and the human resources department, I consider those under my purview, and the city events. Next slide, please. The history with the city secretary's office, you're aware, we've had a little bit of turnover, so two clerks in 10 years, nothing concerning. There's limited continuity between the departments. Every time we had a change, they had a different office focus. Some of that was responsible, was deliberate, at the... Some of that was responsible, was deliberate, at the needs of the city at the time. So, you know, you get a new city secretary, they need to focus on city secretary things. As the staff was developed, with the oversight of the city manager, bringing in more human resources, so your next one kind of had a little more of a human resources focus. And the department does not have, but the department doesn't have any second person to handle things right now. So if the city secretary is out, the city manager and the assistant city manager are handling all of those responsibilities. They're very, very good at it. So we've been very lucky that they're very knowledgeable and very willing. Next slide. One of the things I did, when I looked at the department, is I focused on some items. One item that's very important for city clerks and for the city as a whole, is their records management. So the city has a current policy number seven that was put in place in 2015. And we do not provide any formalized or systematic training for that policy for employees. So that was something I noted. In addition, I noted that our entire process is manual and paper-based. That does cost us money being paper-based, not only are we taking up physical storage, we are currently using a third-party vendor to manage those documents, to store those documents, and to destroy those documents for us. It also has a paper-based process, does limit our access, only one person can have paper at once, you can't search it, you know, just general things like that. Next slide, please. And so my recommendation for that issue is to review and update policy number seven. Identify when we want to use our standard policy. Right now, we have adopted the Texas State Library Retention Policies, so that's what most cities use. It's really standard, it's easy to follow, it's managed for us, it tells us exactly what to do. Unfortunately, we are not following it to the letter of the law in the fact that we don't always destroy our documents when we come to the destruction date. Some of it is a timing, you know, maybe that destruction date comes up right now, and it's the week between Thanksgiving and the Christmas event, you know? And so it's easy to say, I'll look at that next time. Unfortunately, when we do that, it does create, in my opinion, in a non-legal phrase, liability for the city. So we have a document that we would have shredded or would have destroyed. If we have an open records request, we have to make sure that we are aware we have something that we normally wouldn't have. So it creates a little more stress for the staff. And so I'm recommending a digitaliz, digital, it's after my bedtime. Digitalization process for us to evaluate, to be able to make things electronic. With that, we can update our policy number seven and determine when we want to destroy things. I do believe that there is a strong reason not to destroy everything and not to digitalize everything. I think finding the founding papers of this city brings so much personality to the city. It's so just cool and awe-inspiring to see what people did to make what we have today. So I'm not, you know, Sherman, I'm not coming in and trying to burn everything. But I think we need to identify when it's, when it's something that we should maintain in its original format. You know, is there a year, or is there a type of document? Should we have the original papers for residents or anything before, you know, 1988 or something like that? So that's what I'm kind of looking for when I evaluate that policy. In addition, I'm recommending a training program. The employees need to be trained and reminded that they are the record holder. So if I create the email and I send the email, you know, if I receive the email, who created the document that attached? The employees need to remember their responsibilities when it comes to the Public Information Act also. And so I'd like to provide just a brief training. I don't want to take them off of, you know, their frontline work, I just want them to be reminded of their responsibilities. Next slide, please. The second issue that I focused on was consistency. So we talked about how we've had some turnover with the city secretaries, and I'd like to be able to identify some direct processes and make them more consistent. So one of the easiest ones, because we just went through it, was the board and commissions packets. Next slide, please. So with that, y'all did an amazing job in identifying the timeline from when they receive, when the city receives the application forward until appointment. And so I'd like to take from when we received the application backwards. When do we need to start advertising that? Is that something we only put in the Road Runner? Do we just put it in for a month? Do we, you know, need to push that more? So looking at items like that. And then from, once they've been appointed, until their first meeting, I'd also like to reevaluate that process. What training are we providing? We're doing the Open Meetings Act. I think they need the Public Information Act. You may want to consider, you know, do you want to provide oath of offices? Do you want to collect other data? Do you want to review workers' comp with them? So that's one of the things, you as an elected and appointed official falls under workers' comp. And so if you get injured while you're here, you kind of need to have. So it's the same as a new employee orientation, identifying that. Other cities have paper packets or videos that they provide. And so that's just one of my recommendations to look at. Next slide, please. And the third issue with the clerks, with the city secretary's office, is looking at our volunteers. Y'all are so amazing when y'all get a chance to go out and talk to the people, right? These are your people, these are your peers, these are your neighbors. And when y'all talk to them, y'all bring me back some really good volunteers and some really good donations and stuff. And so right now, I feel like my office is providing a shotgun approach. We have Curtis, who is working really hard, he's getting your marquee updated, he's getting your social media updated. We're working on sending, we send emails to people, we send texts to people, we send the printed Road Runner, so we're kind of sending it to everybody. And I'd like to find what's best for the community and make a centralized location where all the other things point to that. I'm not saying eliminate any of them, because everybody receives information a different way. And I'd like with that to also include branding our city. While we don't have a problem with new employees now, y'all have been really awesome. You have people here, you don't have that turnover, knock on wood. We still need to brand our city. It's still a sales pitch to other employees. We can remind our citizens how awesome we are. You know, maybe they don't come, or they don't have children and they don't engage with our events. So how else are we reaching out and reminding them about all the great things y'all are doing? So it's just some recommendations for the city secretary's office. Next slide, please. We talked about the community involvement, we talked about advertising for volunteers, we talked about branding and looking for different ways to recognize for future employees. Sorry, I'm trying to push y'all through a little bit faster, it's past my bedtime. Next slide, please. Next is the human resources department. As a fairly newer department, the citywide uses, usage has been kind of minimal. So if you're from a larger or more traditional human resources where it's centralized, you're used to human resources doing the heavy lifting and helping the departments, we're not using that right now, which is okay, because I'm getting my feet wet. Right now, some of the other departments are advertising for their jobs, they're accepting all the applications, they're doing the interviewing and selecting, making the offers, hiring, you know, all the way through, and HR is not involved in that. Which, if that works for y'all, it works, it's just not traditional. So that's what I wanted to identify for the department. Next slide. Burn through slides. One of the issues that came up when I met with different departments and different employees is the performance review. So we do an annual performance review, and it is kind of for the employees' files. Some supervisors are more trained than other supervisors on how to give that performance review. So some responses back to me when I asked people about it was that it was unimportant, that it was pointless, that it was just, you know, checking a piece of paper. And so it seemed ineffective to both the employee receiving the review and to the supervisor providing the review. Next slide. So I'm recommending that we sit down and discuss the goal of the reviews. Make sure that I have clear direction as to why we want to do reviews. Are we looking to separate and recognize the difference between, you know, what may be considered a good and a bad performer? Do we need to recognize good performers? So is there something we can do to say, hey, you know, you're doing really awesome, give you a pat on the back? That doesn't mean it's got to be a high big expensive thing, we're not buying them a Tesla, we're just, you know, recognizing their, their achievements and what they're providing for the city. And then we want to, if we do change the processes, we need to make sure we train the supervisors on how to do the both reviewing and the scoring. And then I always recommend electronics, so I'm recommending improving the efficiency of the process. If we have a deeper system, like the police department may have an officer who's answering to a sergeant, who's answering to a captain, who's answering to a chief. If you have a deeper like that, sometimes papers can be lost. I don't think they have been here, y'all are pretty, pretty good about that. But it, it's got a back-and-forth process involved. I always recommend HR review anything before something is provided to the employee. Not that our staff doesn't know how to do things, but just it's a separate set of eyes who's looking at it for different reasons and who's not involved at all. So, things like that. I would recommend having some type of process, an electronic process, to be able to maintain that. Next slide. One of the other issues I found was program compliance. Specifically, we are not currently following the FMCSA. I can never remember that alphabet, so I wrote it all down for us. The Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration implemented a CDL drug and alcohol clearinghouse requirement back in 2017. They slowly rolled this out, and now the intent is for the employer to be aware of their CDL drivers, drug and alcohol. Any type of previous issues they've had with previous jobs, any type of issues they have with this job. Next slide, please. And so I'm recommending that we review and update our current drug and alcohol policies, provide an SOP for our CDL drivers, get them fully educated on what the clearinghouse is. We need to get the employees enrolled in the clearinghouse, we need to get the city enrolled in the clearinghouse. And we need to provide the required random drug tests for all CDL drivers. It's 50% of your CDL drivers. At this time, we have four positions that qualify, so every year I would have to have at least two people or two tests performed. If they randomly get picked to the same person, they randomly get picked, but two people, so the expense to this is not a huge one. We would also have to update our hiring and application process for CDL drivers because we are required to provide full queries and partial queries annually for CDL drivers. So that's going on to this clearinghouse where everybody has put their information about the driver and say, hey, have you ever, pardon the slang, popped dirty at another city before or as another employer before? If you did, you have to, you have to go through what's called an SAP process. It's just somebody is making sure they're taking random tests, they've agreed, they're getting clean, we're making sure they're clean and safe before they operate equipment. Not a large process, not a, not a time-consuming process, and not an overly expensive process, just one that we need to work on because we are out of compliance at this time. Next slide. The third thing with human resources that I really wanted to focus on was we don't have a citywide formalized training program in place for general employees. So police and fire are doing awesome, they're obviously getting their guys, their staff well-trained when it comes to the operational for them to be able to do their jobs. They're also required for their licensing to do certain things. Individual staff is maintaining their own licenses, doing their continuing education to maintain their licenses. We're not currently, currently since I've been here six months, doing anything systemically. We're not providing sexual harassment training, awareness training. That was something that the previous clerk was providing, and so I need to get that re-implemented. I think we could provide some additional training. Right now, we're only paying $843 per employee per year. So $1,000, less than $1,000 of training for staff to maintain and possibly expand what they're doing. Next slide, please. So we're looking at providing maybe a citywide training program. I'd like to work with the departments and see more of their training records to make sure we're maintaining those properly and not just for their licensing authorities. Maybe look at some mandatory and some voluntary programs. There are some things that they can do just to help improve themselves, that make them feel better. It provides more, you know, soft skills or other things for the city. It's a benefit for both the employee and the employer. When we have those trainings, we need to recognize and celebrate their achievements. And then I think that is something, while we could make it a super expensive process, we can also go to and utilize our current staff. You know, think about our police officers, those who have gone through FBI training, there's some leadership training, they can provide a leadership course to the rest of the staff in their spare time, you know? So that's something that we can look at and see if that's something they would be interested in providing, is looking at our current staff and their skills to be able to share with other staff. Next slide. Also looked at, employee engagement. Employee engagement is one of those weird, it's kind of a buzzword now, but when you look into it, it really controls the heart of your organization. So when I say engagement, I don't mean, let's go out and have a rah-rah party every, you know, other month. I'm looking to see who's sitting on the boat and not doing anything, who's rowing against you on your boat, and who's really just pulling the boat ahead. So that's what we talk about when we talk about an engagement. And a lot of that ties to your culture. And here at Chavno Park, I have not been able to put my finger on it. I'm not going to lie, I, everything here is good, the staff works together. I don't know how to explain it or quantify it to be able to share it with other people, to be able to make sure we're recruiting those people, that when we're selecting people, that we're selecting somebody that's going to fit. I can honestly say, if I knew at every potluck, everybody was going to have jalapenos and spicy peppers in every food, I would not have come here.
And it's too late.
There's a problem we have, I know, and it was not part of it. It's rough for me. So it's things like that, they're, like I said, there's nothing wrong, everything's okay. Y'all don't have bad turnover, nothing's on fire, people aren't fighting in the parking lots. I mean, right, everything's really good. But I would like to be able to quantify it more to be able to help add it back to that branding. And so we can all be, circle it back around so it all ties together. Next slide, please. One of the obvious ones is, is to do some type of staff survey to find out, asking these confidential questions for them to be able to provide. What is it that you like? Do you just have a friend here that you like? And so you show up every day so you can make jokes with somebody? You know, is that, are you really servant at heart? And you come here because you know you're serving your citizens and we're helping the people? Or is this just, I get to sit back and nobody harasses me kind of job? You know? They all work, we just need to know what they are. That's my recommendation, is to invest a little resources into our engagement and figure out kind of more what our culture is. One of the big pushes is always to say, what's your why? Why do you show up? Why, how do you feel about Monday morning on Sunday night? Well, that's your why. You're feeling, I'm excited, I get to see my friends again, or I don't want to go, I'm already starting to feel sick, you know? Well, what gets you there? Well, I have a mortgage, I have to go. I don't want to stay home and have to babysit my kid, so what's your why? Why are you going? So, oh, I want to really make sure I help so-and-so, I know they called with a problem last week, did they get a chance to get that solved? I want to make sure that resident gets treated well. So identifying that why in our employee engagement, I think, would be helpful for us. That would be something, if we went with a formal survey, would have a financial cost involved in it. Next slide, please. The third topic is city events. Right now, the city provides five city events, public city events. The city secretary is paying a little more coordination on holiday event, trunk-or-treat, Independence Day and Arbor Day. And then public safety is coordinating the National Night Out Event. Next slide. Next slide, please, thank you. The vision of the events, again, I'm new here, I have not found it qualified, in my opinion. So I'm looking for the purpose or the vision of your events to be able to help make decisions on the fly. So when I think about themes, when I think about decorations that need to be purchased, when I think about where the money is spent, is it spent on entertainment, is it spent on this? So I'm kind of looking for that purpose, is your audience small, children? Or do we want to come and look at the beauty of City Hall and the gorgeousness of the city? Things like that. Do we want to focus on Chavno Park and push our logos and our Road Runners everywhere? And we want to get our name out and make sure people are paying attention? You know, so something like that, next slide, please. Is where I was looking for. So again, identifying the why. When we have that, then we have purpose and guidance when we design. When we have that, then we have purpose and guidance when we design these events. And then we'll share that with others, including our employees. So right now, the employee involvement is minimal. Fire and police and public works, sorry, let me correction. Admin employee involvement is minimal. Fire, police, and public works are almost all mandated to be all the time. And admin is working as needed. Most of the prep is during business hours, we're doing that as best as possible to prepare for those. If an employee is required to attend an after-hour event, then they're looking at comp time or overtime as needed. Next slide. And so with that employee involvement, we're looking at, do we need to consider formalizing a work schedule for the events? So either every department says, I'll provide X amount of people for each event that we need to have filled, is there an all-hands event? So is our biggest event the holiday event and we need to have everybody there for that? Do we need to have everybody sign up and attend at least twice a year? So we're helping share that load between the departments and between the budgets. And that's something for y'all to consider is employee involvement. And/or do we need a, a process or a policy for that? Next slide, please. And the third thing with employee events that I wanted to look at was the budget. I just kind of wanted to bring a little spotlight to it. Y'all did great, and you increased the budget last year or this current year fiscal year '24 to a little over $30,000 for five events. Next slide. But we do have to keep in mind that costs are increasing. So a bag of candy is almost $20 plus. While it says it's 150 pieces, even if we have 300 kids come through, that's not two bags of candy. You know, you're either giving them, you're actively counting out two to three pieces a kid or that, we spent hundreds of dollars on candy. This event coming up on Saturday is $7,500 just for the snow. You know, so I think that's your huge selling point, everybody loves the snow, everybody has fun. I, I think it's amazing, but we just need to keep in mind that price did go up from last year, and it will probably continue to go up. We have been relying on staff in front of Chavno Park to be able to help complete those events as we have them now. And I think having a little bit of a future goal for the events, having that vision is going to help us figure out, do I need to budget for something that's going to last for five years and spend a little more money now? Or is this something that we're just going to rotate every year? So we're just going to kind of come in under the radar to be able to help make those. So having that why and that vision, I think, will help y'all determine the budget and help us go from there. I think that was it, oh, one more slide, maybe? With the budget, I do think we should continue to track all expenses and not just the expenses the city pays. I think that will help y'all make decisions when you know what people are paying out of pocket for and why they're paying for things out of pocket. I do think we should continue requesting sponsorships and donations from organizations. I'd like to formalize that a little more. I've provided Bill with a sample sponsorship opportunity. I think we should have basically a flyer year-round that we can share with all of our businesses that said, hey, you can come in anytime and give us money if you want to sponsor. And this is what I have all year. So instead of right now, we're taking one event at a time, let's kind of work on more of a long-term or global plan with the sponsorships and then evaluate the expectations and the budgets accordingly. So when y'all think about your why and your mission, vision, whatever for the events, think about that when you think about the budget. So those are my recommendations in a nutshell. How'd I do? It's still past nine, I tried, I talked really fast for you. Are there any questions or any comments, anything I can provide?
Well, I want to thank you for your very thorough presentation. Guys, I just want to tell you that she talked a whole lot longer than any of the rest of you did. And, and she talks really fast, too, so, you know.
And she says good things.
And she said very good things as well, so thank you very much. We've got two options, it's nine o'clock now, we can all get back with you individually with our comments, which may be richer instead of sharing them right now. Anybody want to share them right now, or does everyone want to let, let Kristen go home? You want to share yours right now?
Yeah.
And, and Curtis, start the clock, okay?
So just, just a couple of comments. The, the first comment is, I can't believe you've only been here six months. It just seems like yesterday you became. I thought, I thought your, your presentation was very insightful. I, I thought you brought a lot of really good points. And especially thought the part about culture and vision were, were spot on.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, very good. Anybody else want to use?
I do.
And, and you can have the balance of his one minute and yours, so you got a minute thirty.
No, I commend you for everything you've done. You hit some points that are right on target, but some of those issues you'll never take care of. Good luck on it. But thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Me, I just want to say I am really glad you're here. And you've got, you've identified a lot of very important things, some that are must-haves and some are nice to have. So thank you, thank you for all of that.
Is the jalapeno-free meal a nice to have or a must-have?
That just means you, it's like you're eating gluten-free and you have to bring your own meal. Yeah, that's, that's what jalapenos are.
We can put Tums in the bucket.
Anybody else? Okay, excellent presentation. Thank you very much. We're so pleased to have you here. Brings us to item 8.8, discussion, action, cancel, or reschedule the December regular city council meeting from December the 25th. We have normally provided that the December meeting will only be held if the mayor and the city, city manager consider it necessary to have a meeting. Bill is suggesting the 18th is an alternative date. Before we suggest the 18th as an alternative date, if everybody would please check their calendars for availability on the 18th, if that was necessary. This would be a regular city council meeting, so we only have to have three people here to conduct it if we had some type of emergency thing come through, that it only takes three of us. It looks like I've got at least three heads on this side, and it looks like I've got two more heads. So Bill, the 18th is available. Does that work for you as far as the parameters for calling the meeting?
Absolutely. I, we're not aware as a staff of anything that is urgent at this point in time. Last year, we had to call a meeting because we were dealing with Bear County ARPA funds. I don't anticipate any of that emerging in the next month, but you never know. It's always good to have it scheduled as an alternative date in case you need it. And then with the intent would be not to, we're going to try not to find something that has to be dealt with.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve rescheduling the December 25th council meeting to December the 18th and canceling that meeting should no pressing agenda item be required? Do I have a motion? A motion from Lee, a second from Pete. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. This brings us back to item 7.2. 7.2 will be a presentation by Chief Dover and some comments made by Bill. If there are additional questions or comments that council members have, please direct them to Bill after the meeting. And then we will go on to item number nine after Chief and our city manager finish. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Good evening. As you're aware, there have been some accusations made against me for responding to a fire in September while I was alleged to be impaired or intoxicated. Those allegations are not true. I've reported this to the city manager soon after the fire, and he has kept all of you informed. I want to address this head-on, and therefore I'm making the following statement. On September 2nd, 2023, the fire department responded to a call for mutual aid to a fire in the Bearable Verde response area. While I was off-duty, I also responded to the call, and I want to clarify the events and circumstances of my response. The reason for this clarification is that earlier in the day, I had consumed some alcohol as I openly reported to several members of the fire department. I feel it is important to be transparent concerning the events because the consumption of alcohol, which could be construed by others as a potential violation of city or fire department policy. In fact, I reported these events to the city manager on September 6th. Earlier in the afternoon, at approximately 1:30 on September 2nd, 2023, I was visiting my in-laws. While at their residence, I had consumed three to four beers and had to eat in a late lunch while watching football. I had consumed my last beer no later than 4:00 PM. Later on the evening, at 8:49 PM, I heard the dispatch tones for the Chavno Park Fire Department, who were being dispatched to assist Bearable Verde Fire Department with a working structure fire. Chavno Park Fire Department responded to the fire utilizing our support truck with two personnel. At 8:56 PM, Captain Gross, who remained in the station, sent an active 911 alert requesting off-duty personnel backfill the station. I then responded to the request via text that I had been drinking and that I could not make it in. Captain Gross acknowledged my text and stated the reason for the needed backfill was due to Chavno Park Fire units responding to a working apartment fire. I acknowledged Captain Gross's response. At approximately 9:20 PM, I was monitoring the fire response activity from my fire department-issued radio. At that point, the radio traffic had made it clear that the fire, in fact, was large, and crews on scene were experiencing difficulties in gaining control and fighting the fire. It was at this time that I self-assessed myself and believed that I was not under the influence of alcohol nor in any way impaired as over five hours had passed since I had consumed my last beer. I proceeded to the fire scene in my city-issued vehicle, and upon arrival, I reported to the command post. Due to the severity of the fire, no interior firefighting was taking place, and all operations were taking place outside the structure. I was assigned to the, I was assigned by the incident commander on scene to a sector command position on the exterior of the structure to simply monitor crews from this location. I remained on scene until the fire was extinguished at approximately 2:00 AM, upon which time I returned to my residence. I'm familiar with the policies within the city of Chavno Park handbook and the policies of the Chavno Park Fire Department. At no time did I violate any policy. However, I do acknowledge how this may be perceived, and I admit that I may not have used the best judgment in explaining to myself during my text with Captain Gross or in my conversations with Lieutenant Fennell at the active fire scene. In conclusion, at no time did I feel I was ever, in conclusion, at no time did I ever feel impaired or any effects from the alcohol or I have not, I would not have responded to the scene. I apologize for any confusion and concern this may have created.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, and just for the city council, I want you to know that I'm, I've been made aware of the acquisitions made against Chief Dover, Chief Dover for responding to the fire while being impaired or intoxicated. And I acknowledge that if these accusations were true, they would be concerning. And the circumstances were first reported to me by Chief Dover himself shortly after the fire, and I conducted a detailed review of the circumstances and, and all related to the city's fire and the city's policies. My conclusion was any accusation that Chief Dover responded to the fire while impaired or intoxicated or unfounded. Furthermore, no city or fire department policies were violated. And I have kept the city, the Chavno Park City Council fully informed of the situation. And I, most important, I retain complete confidence in Chief Dover's leadership and abilities. I think we're very fortunate to have him and blessed to have his leadership leading our fire department. I might add that the Bearable Verde Volunteer Fire Department has released a press release regarding the allegations in which they stated, and I quote, "The situation was discussed with the incident, incident commander for the fire, who stated that at no time did the Chavno Park Fire Chief Daryl Dover exhibit any signs of impairment while at our scene, nor were there any reported to us by others." And I will say that I have discussed this with the chief of that volunteer fire department. And that concludes my statement. And I can talk to you, as I have been, keeping you informed at any time. But we wanted to make sure that, because there's some media requests, that we were being transparent and we, you know, we open, open the air on this.
Okay. Bill, Chief, thank you very much. Chief, thank you for your frank description of everything that has gone on. I believe that I speak for all the council members. We continue to recognize you as somebody who we absolutely trust and that we value. We know that we can continue to look to you to maintain a standard of leadership and excellence for the fire department. Our citizens are very proud of the fire department and all that comes through that fire department, and we know that you will lead it with distinction for the years to come. Thank you very much. With that, I go to item number nine. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion from Lee, a second from Maggie to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion passes 5-0, we are adjourned.